Okay, we'll call the September 18th, 2012 Board Trustees Meeting to order. Ask for your roll call.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Brynfall.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Flunder.
Here.
Trustee Addicks.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Here.
Okay, good morning everyone and welcome to the September Board Meeting. If someone will approve the amendment of the agenda, so moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertained a motion for approval of the minutes of the August 14th.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Audience, to patrons and petitioners, do we have anyone this morning that would like to address the board?
All right.
No one?
All right.
All right. We'll move to item five then. Madam President, Communication.
Mr. President, we have a certificate of appreciation for corporate sponsorship for the 2012 Wyandotte County Back to School Fair. We also have Carla Green who wants to personally thank the board this morning. Carla does not hear you.
Yes, she's at the podium.
She's ready.
You're not supposed to heighten at the podium, Carla. Okay, Ms. Green.
I didn't want you to have to call me twice. All right. Actually, I just want to take a few minutes. First of all, good morning.
Good morning.
I want to take a few minutes just to tell you thank you on behalf of the 2012 Wyandotte County Back to School Fair Committee. We worked hard this year to plan and implement a Back to School Fair that would help to meet the needs of our students here in Wyandotte County. And have a brief PowerPoint presentation, very brief, that I'm going to show you, I think. Thank you, sir. All right. First of all, I just want to give you some numbers, just to give you a little snapshot of the number of families and the number of students that we served. Our attendance was a little bit down this year as compared to last year, and so we've already started to take some steps to try to figure out why that has happened, and I'll tell you in a little bit what we're going to do to address that issue. And then just some pictures of some of the things that happened that day. I know Trustee Rios was here, and I thank you so much for your support that day and for going on camera so that I wouldn't have to do it. Dr. Givens was also here. She thought she was just passing through, and she also was kind enough to address the media. And again, this was Disney Radio. They had some activities outside for the students. Here, just a snapshot of the lines of the individuals that we had out in our parking lot, and our campus police officers were absolutely incredible in keeping things moving out there. As people entered into the building, they stopped at the front desk, and that's where they checked in. And then we just had a series of vendors. A lot of community organizations were out here. The library was here handing out free books to everyone. And it really was an opportunity for students and families to become aware of support services that we have available here in Wyandotte County for them. One of the last things that they did was to get their backpacks that we had stuffed. Then District 500 was generous enough to supply food for all of the families who attended. So, once they finished with everything, they were allowed to grab food, and it was a time for families to be able to sit down together and have a meal. And then probably the least favorite part for most of our students was the area where immunizations were being given out. It was a little interesting to see some of our students come out with five or six Band-Aids because that's how many shots they had to have that day. But for me, as a parent, I really appreciated that because, you know, that was an indication that these were students who were behind on their immunizations, and they were now current on all of their immunizations and have a better chance for a more healthy lifestyle. One of the last stops then was the medical area, and that's where school physicals were given out. The best story from this, for those who think that it's just about handing out school supplies, we actually had a student who came in just for physical. All he wanted to do was play football. And the physicians found a medical condition in him that had gone undiagnosed. He was not receiving regular medical care. And so, because he came to this free event on our campus, he was referred to, referred for treatment. And so, he's able to get the medical treatment that he needs just because he came here on that day. Looking ahead, a lot of people here on our campus that day, and one of the things that we're looking at, you also have a packet of information. I didn't want to go over a lot of detail today. So, you have a packet of information that just gives you some of the data, and it's broken down by zip code, and then broken down on this slide by school cluster. One of the things that we're thinking about for next year is, as opposed to one huge event here on our campus, is to spread it out and to actually have the fairs in clusters. And a cluster would be, for example, Harmon High School and all of the schools that feed into Harmon High School. So their Back to School Fair for all of those schools would be at Harmon. And we would provide resources for them at that location so that families maybe don't have transportation issues because that's a school that's closer to them physically. And then also, those community organizations that target just that area would be the organizations that would, that would service Harmon. And also hoping that we can do that and maybe pull in more of Piper, Bonner, and Turner in our numbers because those numbers were fairly low this year. So again, just want to thank you so much for your generosity. I know the college committed a significant amount of resources to this event, and just thank you for everything that you did and for allowing us to have the fair here. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carla. We appreciate it. It's a good way to get the community, at the Community College, as J.D. has said many times, and so it's a great event. All right. That's it for Communications? Okay.
I have a question for Carla. I understand about the proximity and transportation is an issue in the county, but I am concerned that our, like the physicians and so forth, could avail themselves multiple times. It's challenging to get them to the one. Seriously, I'm familiar with the effort. Do we really realistically think that we could have five, seven back-to-school fairs and with equitable, like, as I say, for the medical in particular, I mean, if we can move the supplies? That's probably the simplest of it. But the other logistics, vendors coming multiple times, of course, Community College will come wherever we need to go, but some don't have that human resource availability. Is that not a concern?
It is a concern. One of the things we're talking about for the death support side is to target those health facilities that are within our neighborhood, for example, there is a medical health facility. And so perhaps we can get individuals in that location to service the target area there. And so, to spread it out that way, there are some clinics that service only the target area, and we can target those health facilities to see if they will provide services in those areas. And it's in part a community service. And then we have community organizations that only serve a small portion of Wyandotte County, and they are willing to have the fair here on our campus. But we're hoping that if the fair is in their community, because they're service target that community, they will go over to the fair. And we're still waiting to see if we can not give them a visit.
Is it a possibility to have those students that need transportation from the outside areas bused in by the school district?
Now, we can question for the school leader because that may cost them anything.
That's okay. Is there a student?
Other comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you once again, Carla. All right, President's Report.
We have several presentations this morning. I'd like to introduce Barbara Clark Evans and the Hutoh students who will be presenting this morning.
Before we get started with our students, I just want to briefly introduce you to Jared Hill, who is our new coordinator at the Intercultural Center, and he brings experience working with multicultural communities and also another person with Spanish language. So, please come by, welcome Jared sometime. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rios.
Welcome aboard, Jared.
Now, we're very pleased to present to you our students who are partnering with KU Medical Center and our Hutos program and the Health Institute at KU campus proper. And J.D.'s going to tell you a little bit about that, and then we're going to turn it over to the students because they're the ones who are here to hear.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us. We would like to recognize all of the students behind me and Chaveli. I want to reintroduce you to Chaveli because she spoke to you a few months ago about her experience at KU Med as an intern through Hutos. It is now a center, not a program, at KU Med, so the leadership there has seen its importance and the impact in the community and also on students metro-wide. Chaveli is going to take the lead this morning and talk to you again to remind you about what Hutos is, the Center for Advancing Latino Health, and also talk to you briefly about her second internship and continued work at KU Med as a student research assistant. And then in particular, a really, really honor for all the students was to be selected at KU Lawrence for a six-week residential program this past summer. And we're all proud. We had six students from KC-KCC. They lived there. They went to school every day, early in the morning, right? And you will hear from them the positives, many positives of that experience. So I'm going to reintroduce you, and it's my honor to. I also fondly and very respectfully call her the ambassador because if it weren't for her, these students probably wouldn't have been able to be selected. If it had not been for her, I probably wouldn't be part of the advisory board for Hutos at KU Med. And even more special, she has encouraged many students to come here to KC-KCC. Students in her church, students from Schlegel where she graduated, who probably would not have come to college if Chaveli had not shown them the way. She's special.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you remember, I was here a few months ago. I was talking about my experience at Hutos as an intern and my experience as a student research assisting at the University of Kansas Medical Center. This summer, Hutos had about 10 interns, and two of them are KC-KCC students. They are Jessica and Hilda, but they were not able to come today. They were working on scientific research poster at Hutos. But this morning, I'm here to talk about another great experience that I and my fellow student had this past summer at the KU Lawrence campus through the Medical Center. It's the Health and Science Enrichment Institute. It's a six-weeks residential program in which basically focuses on improving academic levels for students like us who wants to pursue a career in the health field. We took several courses like chemistry, biology, math, calculus, and English in order to prepare us for the health field, like to see if we like it or if we don't like it. And we are here because we want to share with you some experiences that we had. And speaking for myself, the number one that I had is because I being in this program and because I completed it, we have, all of us, we have a guaranteed interview into KU Med school. That's great for me. I love it. And because of the courses I took, chemistry and calculus, I'm taking right now in KC-KCC, and they helped me because that overview is helping me with my classes right now. And I also learned the path that I have, that I need for med school. It's not only one way, there are several ways I can go through in order to go to med school, and that's what I learned over there. And I also want to introduce my fellow students who also want to share their experiences. Here have Cynthia, Cynthia, Kaia, and Anna.
Hi, I'm Cynthia. It was such an honor to be selected to be on the program, and I have Jeanie to thank because I wouldn't have found out about it if it hadn't been for her. And it really changed the way I see myself because having them believe in me, and I point to them because Maria and Pamela are the ladies that were in charge of getting our applications, and they would go to the campus and check on us, all the way from Kansas City to Lawrence, almost, you know, every day. And having them have me there and think, wow, you're good enough to be here, and consider, we consider you to be worthy of something in the medical field, it just made me really believe in myself. And it encourages me to help others do the same, you know, because they deserve a chance too. One of my favorite things about the program was the virtual hospital that we got to attend at Penn Valley Community College downtown. It was a really awesome experience because even though I am, I forgot to mention, I'm pre-dental, I still am open to the idea of, you know, medical school. And having the chance to play doctor for a day at the virtual hospital was really, really fun, and I think that was probably everybody's favorite part. But yes, I'm Cynthia, and if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask us, and I'd love for other students to find out about this opportunity because it's really changed the way I see many things in life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cynthia as well. She was saying that I just feel like I can keep on going, not only just in nursing school, but I feel like I can do a doctor as well. Like she said, playing doctor for one day made you feel like you can do anything. And the hardest part was probably the chemistry. But other than that, everything was fun, and I learned a lot. It was a good experience for all of us. Also, being away from your friends and family, got to meet new people. It was a great experience for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kaia. The experience was a little overwhelming for me at first because I consider myself not to be the traditional student. Like, I was older than everybody there, including the RAs. So, I was just like, really? But I was actually honored to be selected. I applied for the Hutos program, and I don't know if you noticed, I'm actually not Latino, but they opened the doors for me. And they referred me to the Health Science Enrichment Institute. The calculus and the pre-organic chemistry, it blew me out the water. I've never seen anything like it before in my life. But it felt good to be exposed to things like that in case I do decide to take those classes, which I don't. But if I did, if I did, I'd be ready. The hardest part, of course, is being away from my children. Like, that just made it a lot harder for me to adjust. And staying in the dorms with other people, sharing showers, TVs, oh, I've never done it before in my life, but it was different. It was different. So, I'm grateful to have been selected, and I want to thank everyone for selecting me and giving me a chance, just because I'm a little old and things, you know, I can still make it. My favorite part as well was the virtual hospital. We not only got to play doctor, we got to play nurse, respiratory therapist, nutritionist, the CNA, we played a little bit of everything. We got to work on those mannequins, and they breathed and everything. It just, that blew me out the water as well. It was cool. Hopefully, I get to do something like that again, but, you know, if not, it's something I will never forget. But I just want to thank everyone for selecting me and allowing me to be a part of the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anna, and I'm also grateful for the opportunity that they gave me. It also allowed not only all that they said, but someone like me have an opportunity to go to a university because right now, I don't have that financial status to go to university. So I got to experience what it was like to go to a bigger school. The program, the classes, they prepared me for classes that I'm taking here now, for example, statistics and physics. So the preview that I had there is absolutely helping me here. And I got to meet, I mean, they're right here, but I actually had to go 30 minutes away to get to know them. But it was a good experience overall. I'm really grateful for the opportunity, and I think it's a good program for students to know more about because I had never heard of it until they called me, and I haven't even applied to it. I had applied to Hutos just like Kaia. So I think students need to know more about these programs so that they know what's available. But again, I'm grateful for the opportunity, just like everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. J. Looks like we have some surprise guests over here too from the program. Pam and Rhett, would you like to say anything?
No, I don't think I can provide a great, yeah, please enjoy having me in front of the program. Wonderful, you're talking to a lot of young people.
Thank you. That's it? Thank you much. Thanks, Bea. Maybe I'll say something.
Yes, I have a.
Questions?
Couple of questions. For the students, I think a couple of you alluded to family, financial concerns in continuing your education, and I was wondering if you have found assistance from our staff in talking you through how it can be affordable for you to continue your pursuits?
Geez, this is short, sorry. I have actually got a lot of assistance from the staff, especially Stacy Tucker, who is my advisor, because I'm also an executive officer of Five Theta Kappa. So she's holding my hand and basically walking me through everything, scholarships, financial aid, anything out there because I am a single mother, trying to go to school full-time, not working, and take care of my children as well. So she's exhausting probably all of her resources, trying to make sure that I continue on and make sure I have a degree, not only from KC-KCC, but move on to a four-year as well. So, I think I've gotten help.
How about, can you talk about needing assistance?
Well, I'm actually here on the BISFES scholarship, so that's the way I've been assisted here at this school, but also the counselors and Jeanie, they always tell me about opportunities of new scholarships that are going on that I qualify for and that I can apply to, and telling me what schools are the right fit for me. So yeah, they absolutely do help.
Okay, go ahead. Then the.
May I ask this question to whom, whoever wants to answer this question? This program strictly for ladies, no men involved?
There were men involved, they just weren't from here because we blew them out the water, okay? We rocked, so we got picked. No, there were gentlemen, they just weren't, like I said, from here. They were from different, they're Gardner City, there were people from Hutch, there were people from, where? K-State and where else? Yeah, so.
Oh, Alabama.
Oh, Atlanta, Alabama, yeah, there were guys, but we rocked better than they did, so.
My question, and I was hopeful there were gentlemen involved, but because again, a couple of you spoke to needing to be called to even apply for this program, or unaware of its availability. So I think I may be asking staff, what are we doing? Obviously, these students were very engaged, have shared a very positive experience that, as one said, will stay with them through their lifetime. How are we going to be trying to promote this program where we're not having to make calls to get people to come, but in fact?
It's a great question, and I think I have the answer. We were invited by Dr. Cupertino, who was part of Hutos last year, to be part of an advisory board. And that was, believe it or not, on the encouragement of Chaveli, who knew Dr. Cupertino. Chaveli was trying to get into a college and having some issues, so Dr. Cupertino contacted me, and that kind of made history, or why they're all here. But to the point, Barbara Clark Evans, myself, and Jared now will be part of an advisory board, are part of an advisory board for Hutos. And Elizabeth? And Elizabeth Casco. In addition, Dr. Kramer works with one or two of the advisory boards at KU Med. So there was already a relationship there. This is just another center that we are a part of now. And it's been a great partnership, and this particular program on Lawrence, at Lawrence, I would not, or we would not have known about it until we worked with the interns through Hutos. So I think being a strong partner with KU Med is going to do nothing but benefit our students.
Very good, thank you.
I have a question. Have we, are we allotted in the program, and did we fill our allotment? Is it a rolling number each year, or are we told we have X number and then we fill that?
I think I'm going to defer that to Maria or Pamela. I do not know the exact answer to that.
Ladies, could we ask you to step to the podium, please, because we're recording, and we'd just like to kind of meet you anyway and kind of know who you are. So please, if you would, tell us.
My name is, is it on?
Yep.
My name is Pamela Scott, and this is Maria Alonso Loasis. And we work at the KU Med Center in the Office of Cultural Enhancement and Diversity. And the programs I'm speaking about are three programs that take place during the summer at our Lawrence campus. Health Science Enrichment Institute 1 takes 10 students. Health Science Enrichment Institute 2 takes 10 students as well. And then we have a pre-admissions program that takes 20 students. So overall, we have close to 40 students that participate in this program every year. And these programs are grant-funded through our office.
So it's 10 students total in the program, or 10 per institution?
20 students total in Health Science Enrichment Institute 1 and 2 that these ladies participated in. And then pre-admissions is 20 additional students.
So we had a pretty good number in there.
Yes.
Pretty high percentage, thank you.
A very, very high number.
Thank you. Thank you for the students. Donna, I'd like to.
Oh, yeah, there was a big bonus that I don't think any of us remembered to mention. We got a stipend for participating. So not only did we. So not only did we receive, you know, free housing for six weeks, free food, we also got paid to study and even though it wasn't accredited, the classes that we took, it still, you know, helped us support ourselves and, you know, save up for that transitional process to a four-year university. So it was about 1,250, you know, pretty good because most students our age were probably back home working and not studying. So we got to do both. Really, really, I think we're all so happy about that, too.
That's great.
Very good.
I just want to thank the staff and faculty. These are great programs, but they happen because we have good adults working with the students. And thank you very much for your support of this program, your support of the students. Very much appreciated. And also, ladies from KU, thank you for letting us be a part of your wonderful program. It's great.
I think we'd all second that. And ladies, we'd just like to thank you for representing our college so outstandingly. And we know you're going to be great ambassadors for us and we wish you all of the best in your future educational and professional endeavors. Congratulations. Okay, Dr. Gibbons is going to continue with her report now.
Mr. Chairman, we have Rich Razzdale and Patrick McCourtney from the Endowment Association, who will share with you and also invite you to enter into a new, a new level of participation.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Rich.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. Patrick and I have some information to share with you that we hope you will find helpful and informative to our working relationship. And I'd like to begin by covering a couple of items and then, following my remarks, Patrick will update you on some of the recent activities of the Endowment Association. The first issue that I want to cover is related to an item that's included in your folders this morning. It's a memorandum of understanding that we recommend be executed between the Board of Trustees and the Endowment Association Board of Directors. This document was developed in response to a suggestion by Trustee Daniels earlier this year. And we've worked to put this together to hopefully benefit our organization as well as the college. Briefly, the purpose of the memorandum of understanding is to formally document and detail the rules and responsibilities of the college and the Endowment Association as the association pursues its mission. This is actually a formalization of practices that have been in place for some time. I won't go through this point by point, but I believe it covers the pertinent issues from the perspective of the Endowment Association and college leadership. I might note that Darrell Nguyen has reviewed this document, which briefly provides for the fact that the college will provide space, services, equipment, and support to the Endowment Association. And in turn, the Endowment Association bears all costs of staffing, any travel that might be incurred, fees that we incur, et cetera. And we also noted there that it will be our objective to work collaborative, collaboratively with the college and its staff in all aspects to pursue initiatives that are related to the Endowment Association mission. I might point out that there's a mutual responsibility included in the MOU and that's the fact that we'd recommend that the two boards, the Board of Trustees, the Endowment Association Board, meet at least once annually to share information and discuss points that would be of a common interest. And I would, before, would ask for comments on the MOU, I would briefly touch on my second point and that is the fact that Darrell Nguyen has graciously offered to host such a meeting at his offices. And during that joint meeting, I think it would be Darrell's thoughts that he would cover roles and responsibilities of board members. And I know our board would find such a discussion very beneficial. Secondly, and maybe as importantly as the first point, I think such a meeting would provide an excellent opportunity for social interaction between the two boards and I think that would be helpful as well. So I'll stop there and see if there are questions or comments about the MOU and the provisions included.
One thing that I noticed missing from the MOU was any reference to marketing and branding or co-branding or co-marketing. How are these things going to be handled?
Well, I think it would, while we put together a marketing and communications plan for the Endowment Association, it would certainly be our intent that those actions and activities be consistent with a marketing strategy and communication plan approved by the college so that we're in sync when it comes to logos, information, et cetera. So we look to outsiders as one organization instead of two.
Do you think it's necessary to specifically mention that or you think it's, it covers, it's covered in number three where it says work collaboratively with the college administration, et cetera?
To my way of thinking, that, that covers it, but if the board would prefer something that's more prominent in a statement related to marketing communications, we could include that.
Rich, when do you anticipate that first co-meeting? I know we're looking at annually thereafter, but.
Patrick has had some discussions with Dr. Gibbons about trying to coordinate the calendars of 20 people or so. And it would be our hope to try to do something this fall.
Oh, good.
I don't know if that's possible, but I would say the sooner the better. Darrell, I hope you'd agree with that.
Yeah, I think that that would be adequate as well. I think that the two entities just need to decide what's convenient for them.
I was just thinking that, I'm glad to hear that we're looking at doing something fairly soon and it might be that we can flesh out some things like, like marketing and fundraising. It might not need to be added to, to the memorandum, but it might be a good time to talk about co-marketing at that, at that first meeting.
Yeah, I certainly agree because the efforts, we're both going to be more successful if those activities are in sync.
I also, when you were talking about meeting annually to provide progress, particularly on issues related to strategic plan, I was thinking maybe more than annually, you know, as we look at those strategic planning members are talking about quarterly updates, I don't know if it need to be that often, but I, particularly that first year, it might be a good idea. But there again, that's something that can be discussed at that first meeting.
And that's fine with us. You know, we had an opportunity earlier this year to come to this meeting and talk about some reorganization that we were pursuing in light of staffing changes. And I, I think Patrick would agree with this, that anytime we can provide information that is helpful and informative, we're more than happy to do that, whether it be in this setting or something specially arranged.
I think I want to interject a little bit of thinking on this and that the Endowment Board is going through a transition and it is formalizing its affairs, which I think the entire college community is appreciative of. It's going through some reorganization. I think it's trying to flesh out its identity and, and its strategic plan. And I think that that needs to have time to sort of be able to, you know, you've planted a seed, but you've got to fertilize, you've got to, you know, cultivate. And I, you know, I don't want the cart before the horse. I think consistent updates, the continual presence, Patrick, at the meetings, if there are questions or something that can be communicated in a moment in time, I think that that's going to be very beneficial. I think that it is important that we understand that these are two entities, not one, and so that we need to be respectful of that. I think that's important for this board to allow the Endowment Board and its executive director to, you know, get its bearings. And all of this, this memorandum of understanding and formalizing our relationship and articulating very clearly, I think, the expectations is just refreshing and I think we have to allow that some time. I don't think we need to just be meeting to meet. I think a communication can flow in other ways than meetings to allow for a growing, positive relationship. I would encourage the board to think in those terms, especially with a commitment to appreciate the McEnany firm offering its facility. If we could get an early meeting, early in that, in this fall, I think that that would be able to allow for both to kind of just brainstorm, if you will, and share out some things. But I do think it is important, the Endowment Board, I think, has very committed individuals, but they haven't been able to exercise their commitment so much in the past. And so they're having to have some time, I think, to gel themselves. And I think we need to be respectful of allowing that to happen so that then meetings and so forth would probably be more impactful if, if in fact, we allow that to occur.
I have two questions. One is, it might not go in the memorandum, but I'd like to know what we're going to do towards the Alumni Association because that was discussed at length at our board meeting and also in other places because we have never had an Alumni Association. So I would like to see it in writing because if it don't, it's going to get lost in the shuffle.
Well, if I could interject, it is in writing in the Endowment Association's strategic plan. And to me, it's a better fit there than in this document.
Okay.
And if, if it's okay, in just a moment, when Patrick makes his remarks, I'll ask him to touch on some early research he's come across in, in doing some preparation and pursuing what we can do with an Alumni Association. He's found some interesting information that we can briefly share this morning.
Okay, my second question is, can you tell me the procedure for referrals of students to that office?
Sure. They're welcome. That's one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons we think it's very important for us to have a presence on campus where students can walk in and find Patrick and ask him questions about procedures for applying for scholarships, to enhance that and invite that kind of activity. Patrick met earlier this fall with faculty and staff to talk about the Endowment Association, our mission and our purpose, and to let folks know we're here to serve. We don't have an endless supply of money, but I would note that for the fall semester, the demand for scholarships was lower than what we've experienced in the past. So we need to do some marketing to be sure that all the appropriate entities on campus are aware of what we do, what we're capable of doing, and the assistance that we can provide. But in terms of the procedure to apply, we try to keep that personal and friendly so that it's not, it doesn't become a roadblock to students walking in and asking for support or faculty members saying, say, I have this program, is there any way you can support us in, through your resources?
Okay.
Did I get your question?
No. Okay, do the trustees have, at one time, the trustees had trustee scholarships. Are those still available?
Those are separately funded by the college. In my understanding, that presidential.
But it was handled through, are they handled through your office?
No.
They have, okay.
I, it's certainly, I'm sure, coordinated with financial aid and the appropriate individuals from the college staff there, but we're not a part of that decision-making process and those funds don't come from, from our assets.
Okay, is it only the, only the instructors that can refer students to that?
No, no, no. We would, we would welcome any referrals and we have criteria established for those scholarships. There's a scholarship committee that reviews the applications. So I think the process is there and we're trying to tear down any barriers that might be there, not put up any new ones.
Mr. Chairman, is a motion in order?
We haven't heard from both.
I think we're going to hear from Patrick and then we'll probably, we'll probably do that.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to come in front of you this morning, some of the issues, topics that I was going to talk about, Rich touched on a little bit, but let me, I don't want to take up a lot of your time because I know you have a lot of things on your agenda, but today is my five-month anniversary for being here at the endowment. So I wanted to get in front of you and let you all know as a board, some of the things that we've accomplished over the last five months and answer some of the questions, maybe things that have already come up, but what we're going to do as we move forward.
So that means you're staying.
Right, yeah, that's the plan at least, if the board will keep me. Scholarships are obviously the important thing that the endowment does. That's our mission to award and raise funds for scholarships. So for the fall semester of 2012, as Rich mentioned, our applicants, number of applicants, I think, were down compared to the past. We had 92 total applicants for scholarships this year. We awarded 77 scholarships to those 92 students. Those only, the 15 that didn't receive scholarships, the only reason they did not receive scholarships is because either one, they did not meet the minimum GPA requirement of 3.0 for those scholarships, or they did not submit a transcript and follow through with enrollment into the college. So bottom line is we got to award scholarships to everyone that applied this year and met the requirements through the endowment. Of those 77 scholarships, 57 of those students were from either Wyandotte or Leavenworth County. So we were quite excited about promoting again, getting, taking care of students in our own area. But back to Rich's point, we need to do a better job as an endowment of promoting the opportunities that are available through the endowment. And we are working on that. I've had meetings with the faculty and staff, tomorrow invited me to the faculty-staff meeting when they kicked off the year to let them know what the endowment does, a meeting with some of the deans of the college to let them know some of the specific scholarships we have through some endowed things that are specific tracks of education that opportunities are available. So we want to do a better job for next fall of having more applicants, really honestly, more applicants than we have scholarships available for, to be honest. We just need to do a better job of educating folks and getting the word out about what we have available and we will, we will do that. Next thing on the, that we're working on, obviously, the Hall of Fame Dinner is coming up. That is November 3rd, Saturday, November 3rd. We have six inductees into the Hall of Fame this year, one being George Bridenthal, who's a longtime supporter of education in Wyandotte County. Marlon Cooper, a former faculty member here of the Music Department here at KCK Community College, longtime faculty member. Albert Frisbee, who is a educator from outside of our area and other colleges. Dr. Ron Wimmer, who is the former superintendent of schools for the Olatha School District, Andy Soto. And then two organizations, 2020 Leadership and Prep KC, who were both nominated by some of your fellow Board of Trustees members and are great organizations that do support education in our community. Many of you know Marilyn Allstrom, I know, who runs 2020 Leadership. And Susan Wally is a Prep KC and they are both great organizations. So invitations have gone out. Hopefully you received yours in the mail, either the end of last week or the first part of this week. We are anticipating a sellout. We have a room for about 300 folks at the dinner. Before invitations even went out, between sponsorships and folks wanting to sign up, we had over 130 reservations already for the event. So I anticipate that event selling out pretty quickly. And we will have Krista DuBil from Channel 41 will be our emcee again this year for that event. Another thing that we've done, we've created a new endowment brochure that I'll pass out. I'll let you guys take a copy of, some of you have already seen it. Just, again, another piece, another marketing piece to let folks know what the endowment does, who we are, what our mission is, and how they can get involved. So I want to share that with you. If you need more copies of this, I have it both electronically and in a physical piece. We'd be more than happy to share that with you as you're out in the community, talking to folks, promoting the college, promoting the opportunities that are out there. This will give them a little, in a nutshell, what the endowment does and they'd be more than happy to contact me if they want to get into more detail about some of the opportunities. And last but not least, many of you know Grace Jackson was in our office and working with Endowment and college relations for several years. She retired on July 31st, was her last day. We have just recently hired our new assistant that will be shared 50/50 with the college relations and Jim Beechwood, who runs our college relations department. Dewana Fanger is here in the audience. Dewana's back here, say hello, Dewana. This is Dewana's second day with the endowment. And so always the running joke that we've all heard is, well, at least she came back. Grace said, I'm going to stay. I was excited to see Dewana walk back in the door this morning and decide to actually come back to work. Dewana comes to us from. to actually come back to work. Dewana comes to us from the KCK chamber. What a little coincidence there, but not really.
She's called stealing staff, Patrick.
The office assistant there, office manager, the finance assistant, and manage their database, which is a lot of the same things that we will, she will be used in serving and helping me out with the endowment. So that is it, kind of real quick nutshell, some of the things we've done. And we'd be more than happy to answer, oh, alumni, I'm sorry, Alumni Association. The question was asked about alumni. Alumni and the creation of an Alumni Association is on, definitely on the endowment's radar and is part of our strategic plan. In talking to some of our counterparts, my counterparts at other colleges, at Metropolitan Community College, Johnson County Community College, I found out some interesting things. Johnson County Community College has completely disbanded their alumni program. Metropolitan Community College does not have one either. They have found to be a mighty struggle at the community college level to do an alumni association because of the transient nature of the colleges. And when the students go out, they typically will go on to a four-year institution. And when you ask them where their alumni are, they will not say Kansas City Kansas Community College. They will say Kansas State, or Pitt State, or Mizzou, or wherever it may be. It's not to say that the process and to do it is impossible to do, but there are some challenges there, some major challenges. I don't know how much of a major funding source an alumni association will be for the amount of work that will go into it administratively to do. But it is definitely something we are looking at and wanted to pursue as we move forward. Will it be happening in the next 30, 60 days? Realistically, probably not. But it is definitely something that is on our radar, and we plan on pursuing.
I appreciate the research, because it's actually a logical or rational mentality that you've just presented. But again, it is about, really about the involvement. We're just trying to get more people to be partners with the college. So I think, maybe thinking of it in terms of that, maybe, may be helpful, Patrick. And again, those individuals that you spoke with, I'm sure they've come up with alternative plans. You don't need to reinvent the wheel. What are they, how are they going about?
You know, one of the things that was pointed out to me by my counterpart at Johnson County Community College, which was a very good point, she said, "I think you might have a better," you being Kansas City Kansas Community College, "a better potential success rate than, say, we do, because of a lot of the students that come to this college are Wyandotte or Leavenworth County residents. There is obviously, as we know, a strong passion for this county. People support this county. They're strong proponents of Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County. You might have a better success rate of getting those kind of folks involved." We just have to find out, what is that, what is the benefit for a alumni to join an alumni association? What's the benefit for them to do that? And then what's the benefit, obviously, for the colleges, to get more people involved into that? We have to make it, so it's a win-win for everybody.
Right. Well, again, I just want to express appreciation, Rich, for your leadership. It's just been stellar and constant. And I think that that needs to be recognized. And Patrick, the professionalism and the work ethic that you've demonstrated, your presence in the community, your communication with us, I'm sure will continue. I've appreciated the updates. And I think that it truly is exemplary of what we can be expecting, not just in the coming months, but in the coming years, from the association. And I'm certainly glad to be the board representative with the, with the endowment. Appreciate it very much.
We appreciate your comments.
And I would move approval of the memorandum of understanding.
I have something else I want to say.
I'll second that motion.
We got a motion. Now we have a second by Ray. Okay, now discussion.
Okay. On the alumni part, most of the students are older students.
Correct.
So they're not going on to the other schools, to the four-year institutions. Out of my class of 1952, last night at our meeting, 30 of us, out of 42 that we're going to have our reunion in a couple of weeks, attended this school. All of them did not graduate from here. All of them probably didn't graduate from nowhere. But they are willing to put something back into here. So I, I don't care what Penn Valley has done. I don't care what Johnson County Community College does. You can't compare us with them, anyway. So I would suggest that we try real hard to start that association, because a lot of people do not come here to graduate. They come here to get a better position on their job. So I want you to look at those folks, because they are living here in Wyandotte County.
Well, here's the other challenge. We have, of the 10,000-plus alumni that are from Kansas City Kansas Community College that we have in our database, the majority of the addresses and contact information that we have for those alumni are-
That's what's going to be home.
-poor. They're bad. They are the parents' addresses. They are addresses of people that have moved. We have no way to get in touch with them. So that is another challenge. I mean, we've got ideas, but again, doing those things costs money. And we, as an endowment board, have to look at those costs and benefits of doing both those things. And it is definitely on the radar.
Patrick, I, I think that's one of those projects that would be a really valuable one for the two entities to pursue together, and not just looking at the fundraising aspect. But a lot of information came out of the Listening Project, that there are folks out there who have attended. They may have only taken a couple of classes, but that they could, in turn, be ambassadors to let the community and, and their contacts know all of the good things about the college. So that, maybe that's another thing that we could kind of pursue, talking about at that first meeting. I think that-
Yeah.
-that would be really appropriate for both of us. We'd both benefit.
And if we can get manless contact information for those kind of people, those start our database for that kind of project.
Let me add just one comment related to the pursuit of establishment of an alumni association. Whatever success we can realize in this area, it's not about graduates. It's about individuals who have some association with this college, whether it was one course, two course, or no courses. We have supporters who never set foot in this school, which is unfortunate, but it's a fact. So if you, if you'll note, the publication that we send out three or four times a year, it's Alumni and Friends. It's not just for folks who have an AA. And if demographic trends continue, that's going to be more so the case going down the road. So our efforts in this regard will be to reach all those who have an interest in this college, not just some who have a piece of paper.
I call for the question.
All right. Just going to call for the question. All of those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you.
I might note that our board meets tomorrow morning. And one of the things that Patrick and I will do, as we talk about the opportunity for this joint meeting, is to really encourage our board members to adjust their calendars, so that on whatever date we can establish, we can have as larger representation as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick.
All right, Dr. Givens, next.
Carolyn Allster has a special presentation. She is from the Leavenworth Center, and she is president of the Staff Association.
Morning, Carolyn.
Good morning. And it's my honor to be here this morning as Staff Senate President. Staff Senate sponsors three different employee recognition awards for staff. Two of these awards are announced by annually. Supportive Team Effort at KKKCC, or STAKE. Personal Innovative Technology Award, or known as PETA, which I'm not quite sure where the food connection came from. These were established before I joined Staff Senate. These two awards are announced in January and May. Throughout the year, however, Staff Senate recognizes monthly a staff employee who has exhibited outstanding helpfulness in assisting students, staff, faculty, and the community. Someone who has gone above and beyond the expectations or duties of his or her position. Employees are nominated for this recognition by their colleagues. Names and references to the nominees are removed, and the submissions are sent to a business or organization in Wyandotte and Leavenworth County for review and selection of the recipient. I'm here this morning to present the Customer Service Award for July of 2012. This nomination was submitted by Baz, and I'll read what he submitted. Of all the candidates nominated for the Customer Service Award, none strikes me as more deserving and qualified than this person. I offer my endorsement of her and list some of the reasons why I think she should be recognized for her service to all of KKKCC's constituencies. She is easily the most cheerful person I know. The kind of person who goes out of her way to help whomever needs help every day. She loves people, works hard, and always tries to lift the spirits of those around her. I believe these characteristics represent all that is good in our college, and I strongly believe that such qualities must be recognized. She worked as a highly competent and skilled member of the staff, and this dedication and hard work led to her promotion after only three months of working at KKKCC. Her service to visitors has far exceeded the requirements of the job. I can sense her passion for what she does. In a sensitive position, like the one this person holds, it is possible for small issues to slip through the cracks. This person never allows the "not my job" syndrome to get in the way of excellent service. Regardless of whose job it is, this individual takes each challenge as her own and follows through until it is resolved. It is always a delight to work with her. Some of you may know who I'm talking about. I feel confident that you will agree that Peggy Friedman is the most deserving candidate for this award. Peggy?
In addition to a lovely certificate suitable for framing, Peggy will receive a $25 gift certificate to the legends. Peggy, congratulations.
Be sure you get that in the minutes.
I'm interested to see how that'll come out in a minute. Well, I think we all would, would second and agree, it was an excellent choice. Baz, thank you for the nomination, and such a wonderful write-up there. I mean, you nailed every, every point right on the head, so. Wonderful.
She fought really hard to find out what it was Carolyn was doing on the minutes, and she couldn't get any information. Appreciate all that you did. Thank you so much. The Strategic Plan Development Team presented the strategic plan at the KKKCC Advancement Board, Advancement Council Meeting on Monday evening, September the 10th. And I'd like to thank all of those who participated from the college. It was highly successful. And as we polished this presentation, now we've done it several times, we think we'll take it on the road. It was, it was really a wonderful opportunity, and we thank the Advancement Board for inviting us. The first strategic plan campus forum was held on Wednesday, September 12th, to a standing-room-only group of KKKCC faculty, staff, and administrators. And it was highly effective, and that was probably the first of more to come. Wanted to ask the board about a holiday gathering. We had one last year. We need to talk about whether or not we'll have another one this year. Last year, it was highly effective, and we had somebody volunteer their home and-
And I've talked to my wife, and she's willing to do that again. So if you would like, we're willing to have the board wherever else you want to come, so.
Not on a Thursday.
And we'll have Peggy work to-
They work on Thursdays, so I won't go.
-coordinate the dates with the calendars to make sure that happens. Want to get it on early, so that people have it on their calendar. The date has been set for the board's self-evaluation discussion, and that's October 30th. Again, McAnatty-McLeven Phillips will host us, and it'll begin at 4:30 and end at 6:00 p.m. The board assignments for 2012-13, I think you have copies of those. We wanted to make sure that we have all of the right people on the right committees. So if it's correct, you don't need to let us know. If it's not, please let us know that we need to make changes before we make it a public document. The ACCT Conference Voting Delegate, I received the paperwork for that. So I assume that the delegate will be Mrs. Flunder, and that you, Mr. Ash, will be the alternate.
Alternate, correct.
Okay. So I have the voting material, and I can either carry it with me to the conference or give it to you before we go. And that's the end of my report. Oh, the holiday party, I forgot that. The holiday party for the college, want to make sure you get that on your calendar, will be Wednesday, December 12th. And I think it starts about 11, 11:30, something like that, and goes until 3:00. But I'll send you the specifics later. I don't have the time with me. I don't know that the time has been designated yet. But we would certainly appreciate board attendance at the holiday party for the college. Rather than having three holiday parties, as we've typically done, we will have one, as we did last year. And it was very well attended.
Okay. December the 12th, get it on the schedule.
All right.
All right. Any questions for the president? Hearing none, we'll move on then to the next agenda item, personnel. We'll hear from Dean Leon the Marks.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to draw your attention to the personnel report. Item 7A, 1 through 7, for your information. Item 7B, 1 through 30, for your approval. Asking your approval for that, as well as 7C, 1.
Move approval of recommendations under B.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Are there any questions for Dean Marks?
Dean Marks, I don't know if you know this or not. I'm curious, for some of the adjunct faculty, we hire them by credit hour, and some we hire by hourly rates. Do you know why? What's the difference? Why we do one, one way and one the other? If you don't, that's fine. I'd just be curious.
Yeah. Those that are hired by hourly rates are in the nursing area primarily, and it's based on the classes and the way that they configure the hours that they teach.
So the needs of departments determines that.
Yes. Because it's more contact versus contact hours in the nursing area.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Mr. Chairman, on item C, shouldn't there be a discussion in executive session about that? One another matter, just going to move it to executive session.
I believe that was addressed in the president's letter.
It was.
There was, but there is another matter that will be taken up in closed session.
Okay. Well, as long as the board is satisfied with the letter, then I will move approval of the recommendation under item C.
I think we already voted on it.
No, I just moved, my motion was B. I didn't, I didn't-
Your motion was A and B? Okay, all right. So now we have a motion to accept item C, nine C, or seven C, excuse me. And a second by Wendell. Okay, any question or comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, J.D.
Thank you.
Okay. The Vice President's Report, Finance and Administrative Services.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce Carolyn Allendorf and Spencer Fenton, and they have a present, another presentation for Dr. Givens.
Yes, Dr. Givens, if you would want to come to the podium, so we can present the plaque to you and the Board of Trustees. At the end of May or early in June, we received notification that Kansas City Kansas Community College has been named a military-friendly school for 2013 by GI Jobs Magazine. This is the third year KKKCC has achieved this designation. And I'll read an excerpt from the letter we received- And I'll read an excerpt from the letter we received from Rich McCormick, publisher of GI Jobs Magazine. "The competition for our 2013 Military Friendly Schools list was fierce, and as a result, we raised the already stringent criteria to a higher benchmark. Your school is among the elite. In July, you will receive a Military Friendly Schools plaque commemorating this distinction. As a military friendly school, you will be provided with a basic listing in our 2013 Guide to Military Friendly Schools, which publishes in late September 2012. You also will receive a basic listing online. In late September, we will issue a press release announcing the schools which made the list. I request that you refrain from any public announcement of your inclusion on the Military Friendly Schools list until after our announcement, September 17th, 2012. You have demonstrated a strong interest in recruiting military students, and I urge you to augment your already stellar efforts by continuing to improve your military friendliness each year. Ensure your place on our list by bolstering the policies, efforts, and results you use to recruit and retain military and veteran students. These policies, efforts, and results were carefully gleaned through our survey and weighted into our rankings. Please note, military friendly schools are not ranked on the list. On behalf of the 8 million military members and veterans seeking a school, I thank you for your commitment to educating our nation's most deserving heroes."
I'll just read briefly what it says.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Morning.
It says, "To Kansas City Kansas Community College, making life better, has been selected by GI Jobs Magazine as a military friendly school for 2013. This honor places you in the top 15% of all schools nationwide. Your steadfast commitment to educating our nation's great military veterans will enable the United States to prosper for generations to come."
Well, you may be new at it, but let's make it a habit, all right? That's an incredible recognition. Thank you all very much. Thanks to all the staff and folks here at the college that have to do their part in order for everyone to receive that recognition, so we appreciate it very much.
Spencer and Carolyn play a real role, and Spencer is our veterans coordinator, and Carolyn in her role in Leavenworth community, so they deserve special recognition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, I'd like to introduce Chris Blevins, and I don't know, Bob must have split, Bob Bradbury, there he is, you're hard to hide, Bob. And Matt Wendell, Matt Wendell from JE Dunn, and Phil Johnson from JE Dunn. Phil's a mechanical engineer, but today he's going to be IT guru. And what we're going to do here, this is a computerized look at what it'll be when you walk through the front doors of the Thomas R. Burke Technical Education Center, a view of what it will look like indoors.
Thank you, everyone. Again, my name's Phil Johnson, BIM specialist for JE Dunn Construction. Hold on just one second. There we go. Okay, so we're going to take you on sort of a virtual tour here at first. Anything that you guys wanted to start off with? This is the Tech One building, so what you've been looking at right in front of you is a live model, so we'll take a live tour here, just to start off with. And sort of sit down in the front door here, and we'll just take a stroll on the inside, so you can imagine yourself strolling into the front door.
Stay off the grass.
Sort of a realistic...
We thought it was an official tour.
Look. You notice some of the tile, the logo, Kansas City Kansas logo in the front.
To the left there will be the bookstore, to the right is the library, that's what you'll see up in front of you at the angle right here where we're at.
So take a look right here in the center, and we'll try to highlight each area. So this is looking down really to the west, down the center hallway. The next look is into the library there on the right. And we'll take a step back and look into the bookstore. One of the things we didn't highlight was the solo tubes, so let's maybe look at those Get past the entry here. So the solo tubes is a unique feature of the school, so you can kind of see how those turned out. All right, we'll take a stroll, look to the left, kind of look down the hallway to the south, this is administrative offices, the campus police, campus police next to that. Looking to the east, towards the front entry, and then into the cafeteria area, the kitchen and seating area. Okay, looking back to the west, and we'll take a stroll down the hallway and look back into the, I believe the bakery is back here.
Why is that even down the hall?
No goodies in there yet. Okay, we'll turn back to the south, and I believe this is a computer repair to our left there. Back down to the east, and we'll stroll back down to the hallway there, looking back to the front doors. I wonder if I'll give you a perspective of the cafeteria as well? So we'll just kind of go through the wall here, take the shortcut.
The matrix.
Okay, so cafeteria commons, looking to the south, and then back to the exterior. So this is one way that we've actually used the technology, utilized the technology for this project, Tech One. And I'm part of a BIM team at JE Dunn, and BIM stands for Building Information Modeling, sort of a newer thing, definitely is vast through the industry. Oh, sorry, okay. The Building Information Modeling really is the creation and management of the intelligent digital models through the building process, and so that's what we've done here. This is kind of the start of it, this is the architectural and realistic design. Let me switch over to sort of the meat and potatoes of what we've utilized the technology for as well. And this is the, kind of taking a look at the coordination side of what we've done. Let me just kind of take a stroll over this. This is, you're actually seeing the structure, the architecture, and the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, everything sort of plugged into here. All right, so this is kind of going through the plaza area and then into the main. But what we decided to do was use BIM, Building Information Modeling, for the coordination, the MEP-FP coordination, Mechanical, Electrical Plumbing and Fire Protection. And what we needed to do was to have some kind of a backbone structure to be able to give credibility to the process. And so we chose to laser scan the building. Our laser scan team came in and scanned the entire existing structure, including exterior walls, columns, floors, overhead joists, and beams. And so what they did is they brought the scan back and was able to actually build an accurate and reliable structural model that we could use for the backbone. We then took that structural model and coordinated with the architecture, and looked at things like exterior walls, whether they lined up, some of the columns, made sure that those were supposed to be hidden in walls, that they actually were hidden in walls, and so on. So then we got the contractors on board, and once we got them on board, they were required to model their scope, mechanical, electrical, so including ductwork that you see there. A lot of the blue is the ductwork, the piping is in white. A lot of mechanical equipment was modeled in, light fixtures, air diffusers in the ceilings, those kind of things. So we're looking at all of the entire scope of the MEP design and coordinating it, that everybody has a clear path through the building.
They have a portion of this that he told me about, is it collision avoidance, or...
Yeah, so the process is called clash detection, and we use a, technically, yeah, exactly. So it's a phased approach. We look first at the structure, everybody needs to get out of the structure first before we really get into the trade-to-trade. We look at ceilings, clearance areas, panel clearances, light clearances, so we can actually take the light fixtures out of the ceiling. So we model that, and we clash it with all the other systems to make sure everything is smooth and installs correctly.
Can you do that, Phil, in your priority, structure takes top priority, and then you work way down?
Obviously, yeah, structure can't move, so that's top priority. Then we get into ceilings, they have a little bit of adjustability, but we try to keep them where as designed. This is the mezzanine, so we're dropping down into the mezzanine, sort of on the west side, and walking through and seeing some of those MEP systems. You'll see the holes in the walls, those are some of the core drills that'll happen. We do try to do a good job of coordinating all penetration, so you notice that the contractor moved on me, and so he's getting me a new penetration drawing that I'll update to the model.
That was chilled water piping, and what, just coming from the chiller ring back, coming all the...
So that's a sort of overview look there.
Say that again?
Get the mic, yeah, what the hell is going on here? Go right ahead.
Well, basically, like Phil said, it's used in clash resolution so that before we get out in the field and start building, hopefully we resolved all conflicts, so that when the contractors show up on site, they're not fighting over who puts their, whether their piping goes here or the ductwork goes there, all of it's resolved before we get to the site. There may be a few conflicts when we get out there, but most of it is resolved ahead of time in the model, so that when the contractors come to the site, they know exactly where their ductwork goes, where their piping goes, where the sprinkler piping goes. And so basically, it's to help expedite so that when you, if you don't do that ahead of time, you get a conflict in the site, you've got trades sitting around, contractors sitting around, trying to, you know, wasting time, costing money, costing everyone money. And so by doing this, we hope to resolve all that upfront ahead of time and expedite, you know, the construction time, and so that conflicts don't arise out in the field.
And all of this will be hidden by the ceilings and all the rooms. I kind of wanted to show you what's going to be above those ceilings and in the space above them.
I'll let you don't see, for sure. So, yeah, we try to create a, really, a roadmap. We make it very easy for the people in the field to just have a roadmap to install. They don't really have to think about where it's going, they just follow the directions, and it makes it very easy and simple.
When is the finish date?
When is the finish date?
August 1st.
2013? Yeah.
You already asked what year.
What year?
What about, let me ask, how about the roof? Is there any leaks at this time for that roof is concerned on that building?
Right now, we replaced a lot of the metal decking, the insulation's been put down, the base sheet's put down. There's no leaks, there may be areas where we haven't finished all the flashing per se, and they're starting cap sheet right now, which is the final white cap sheet that you see on a lot of the roofs on the main campus here. And once the cap sheet goes down, we're completely dried, we're dried in now, but we'd be completely dried in because some of the flashings aren't done yet around mechanical equipment and those types of things which are being finalized now. They started cap sheet yesterday. We hope to be done with the plaza portion of the building by probably the end of next week, and then they'll move on to the main and start cap sheet on the main at that time.
What's your name, young man?
Bob Bradbury, I'm with Blevins Bradbury Architects.
Okay, Bob, all right.
I have a question. Unitedated Building's done August 1, obviously you can't move in, you've got to start moving in earlier than that. Do you have a plan at this point, is that when you're going to start transitioning programs into that building?
Yes, we got a plan, and August 1 is the official day, but we hope, way before that, we'll be moving as much stuff as we can ahead of that time, but occupancy and moving some things in are different dates.
I'm curious how, because you've got ongoing classes out there, how you're going to transition, take some time to move that, or you're going to not have some classes during certain periods of the year, or you're going to try to keep the schedule you have going?
Yeah, that August 1 date would be the unified government giving us a final certificate of occupancy, but that phased move is being planned right now.
Do we have a guarantee that they'll do that on August 1?
No.
Been down that road a few times, I think.
The plaza portion of the building, we're trying to finish that first, and some portions, some of the move will begin soon on that, and we've coordinated that with Mr. Bodie and with Cliff, the things that can be brought over, will be brought over as early as possible to expedite the move of all the equipment to the new facility.
When can the board take a tour?
Yeah, hard hat tour. Well, actually, I think you could probably coordinate that through the vice president. I went last week as part of the Finance Committee. By no means, it looked great to me, but I'm not a construction expert, but I do appreciate that the workers there were very cordial, willing to stop, explain, you know, and it seems that things were progressing. I mean, I was kind of glad that I did go, because that's actually made little sense to me, once, having been there, and then seeing it in this virtual kind of way. But things are progressing very nicely, seems to me, and again, appreciate the, I guess I'd call it the craftsmanship, right, that seems to be taking place there. So I appreciate that, and would encourage the board, right now, you know, they're, I mean, it really is a construction site. But, you know, I actually had encouraged the vice president to see if Dr. Burke wouldn't want to take a tour to see kind of the skeleton, and then when it actually becomes August 1, the difference, I think, would probably be pretty amazing. So maybe if board members just individually, and then have a time prior to the August 1, when the board could go through, would be beneficial to them.
Mr. Bodie has extended an invitation to all of the board members to go now, so that you can see it at this phase, hard hats and closed-toed shoes, and then again, at another point when it's finished, so that all of the board members can have the same perspective of the building process.
I was going to say, I think that would be a great thing to do, because 70% of your project, once the sheetrock and the ceilings get in, you will never see, it'll be out of sight. So now's a good time to go see the framing and the piping and all the work that's being put in place, that once the sheetrock starts going on, you won't be able to see it anymore.
And the temperature's kind of broken now, so it's not quite so warm in there, so just holler at me, and we'll set it up and go, individually or as a group, however. It may be still easier now individually, just because you kind of step in between doors and things, and so it might be a little bit easier. If you want to go, holler at me, and we'll get there. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Clyde, for calling me a young man, too.
Everybody's young to Clyde.
I sure would.
Now, I'd like to introduce Greg Schneider. He's going to give you a short review of the campus crime statistic report that you saw.
Good morning. Mr. Bodie and Dr. Givens invited me to come, give a short briefing on what this annual crime report, the purpose of it, and the inclusion of the documents. Briefly, this document began in, back in the early 1990s. It's typically referred to as the Clary Act. The whole name is the Gene Clary Disclosure of Campus Security Policy and Campus Crime Statistics Act. Statistics Act. Uh, and then it was amended, uh, with another act, uh, called the Higher Education Opportunity Act of 2008. Originally, we could accomplish the requirements on a single sheet of tri-fold paper that included our crime statistics. Uh, now it's evolved to the current document, which is at least 27 pages, and I can assure you, by next year's version, it'll be even larger. Uh, the Department of Education is, uh, the federal agency that kind of mandates overseas and, uh, kind of polices this act and the compliance of it. Uh, I know we look back at Virginia Tech after what happened there. The Department of Education did come in, they levied fines and their opinions on what they failed to do or what they should have done. Michigan State University also had issues and received fines. There were, there were also smaller institutions as well that have been fined in the past for not being in compliance with this act. So, it's something that the Department of Education does take seriously, and we take it seriously. Currently, the campus police department is the entity on campus that compiles, tracks, and puts this, uh, document out each year. I could go into, I'll switch over to, you know, the statistics that we have. This document has to include the most current three years of the crime statistics. Uh, it's a document that we have to put out and publish by October 1st every year. So, here in a couple of weeks, we're mandated to have this information out, and how we do it, instead of trying to send a document like this out to everybody, uh, they finally made it easier for us to where we can put an email out with a, you know, website where you can click on and go and review that document online. So, we send an email out to every staff, faculty, and student on campus, uh, to where they can click that, review it, and we meet the federal requirements of doing so.
When you do that, Greg, you do that early in the year?
Uh, no, it, this is by October 1st of every year.
That's when you send the email out?
Yes.
Okay.
And, so this document, even though we're sending it out by October 1st of 2012, it has the 2011, that's the most current year that we have, even though the year is about three-quarters of the way over. We're just, that's when we're mandated to put, uh, these statistics out. So, we have to have 2011, 2010, and 2009. But it gives you a comparison as to how the trends are. Did it go up one year? Is it consistently up one year? Uh, but we also have this document in our office, so if somebody would come in and say, "I would like to see this document," we have it readily available for them, and we can hand it to them as well. Uh, another requirement is, uh, prospective students and prospective, uh, faculty and staff. This has to be made available to them as well. And currently, uh, for employment, um, most of the employment applications are done online. So, we were able to put this website on there as well, to where we met the federal requirements for that. And I believe, uh, we have it on our website, to where prospective students, if they come on board, it's right at the beginning, uh, they can go to that, um, website and pull up this document as well. So, I think we're in compliance on that. Um, when you get into our, you know, crime statistics, uh, they look good. Um, you know, I'm very proud of these statistics, but these are what they call major crimes, type-one, uh, crimes, and it's fantastic. Uh, as you look over, um, you know, the document, and one of the, I guess, complexities of putting this report together, as we get more campuses, we have to have a separate, uh, compilation of statistics. So, the main campus is one. Um, the main tech center, that's one campus. Uh, our satellite, uh, center down at 75th and State, that's a separate campus. 68th and State, separate campus. So, we have to track all the, all this crime statistics separately, and we also have to include a general area around, uh, these locations. So, if something happened, you know, across the street, on the sidewalk, we have to include that. But if it went beyond that sidewalk, we don't have to include it. So, it's, it's very complex. It's evolved through the years. Um, it makes it tough, because again, the federal government, they're the ones behind it, and a lot of their legislation, it changes from year to year or every two or three years, and so it's, it's tough to stay up on and stay current. But, uh, Mr. Bodie allowed myself and my Deputy Chief, uh, we attended a four-and-a-half-day, uh, course on this document, uh, earlier this year, back in April or May, and it was very valuable. The person that put it on, Dolores Stafford, she's the retired chief of police from George Washington University, and she is one of the top Clary Act, uh, instructors in the nation. And she has testified before Congress, uh, she's fought for different legislation, fought against certain things they were wanting to mandate. So, uh, we were lucky to be able to go to that training, uh, and it was mind-blowing. Uh, there's a lot of issues that go into this, but, uh, I can definitely tell you, we feel much more comfortable now than before, before we went to that training. Um, now, the bad part about, uh, these statistics, you know, it's got the type-one, major crimes. Well, it doesn't mandate us to put in lesser crimes. Um, you know, anytime somebody's a victim of a, of a crime, it doesn't matter how major, how minor, you're still a victim. Um, probably on our campus, you know, the biggest, uh, crime we probably have is crime of theft. But theft is usually a crime of opportunity, and I think the more we can educate our college community to not be a victim, uh, just like I'm getting ready to put, put together, uh, kind of like a crime alert, which goes along with this mandate. Uh, as I'm walking around, I see, you know, students, even faculty and staff, they have an unattended purse, an unattended backpack, just laying around. Their books are laying, say, down in the deli, and they go to get something to eat. Well, books are money. But if you're, if somebody steals your books, I remember what it's like being a student, it's kind of hard to replace those books when you have to go out and pay for it a second time. So, I'm, uh, putting together an email to put out campus-wide, just to remind people of, hey, you know, they kind of got lax, let's get focused again, let's address some of these issues, to where we can minimize. We're never going to be able to eliminate crime, but I think we can minimize it, and the more we can educate, uh, our college community, uh, the better off we all are. Um, I can go back to a few, uh, things that I think that, that helps us out as a college. Uh, one of the things, I've been chief for over 12 years now, and one of the things I strive for is kind of the community policing proactive approach. Uh, I think anybody, if you're a police officer and you wait for something to happen and you go and write the report, I think a lot of people can write a report, that's not policing. But if you can be proactive, uh, educate the community, and we've been lucky, because our college community has also bought into that. Uh, they do a great job of recognizing issues that come up. They feel comfortable in communicating with the campus police department or other, uh, areas on campus as well. So, the interaction that has been developed is probably one of the keys to our success for having the type of crime statistics that we do have. So, uh, it's not just the police department, it's the college community as a whole, uh, that are the important part of the success of what we've achieved. Um, a few examples of that would be, you know, we give an escort service, you know, uh, in the evening time, if somebody wants a, you know, if it's dark outside, they have to walk out to their car, they parked on the Far West, uh, parking lot. One of our officers will either walk them out or give them a ride out to their car. We want them to feel comfortable when they step on campus or when they go to leave campus. So, we do have that service. Um, uh, reporting a crime, well, if you don't feel comfortable approaching a police officer, you're probably not going to get much information. So, we strive to kind of have an open-door policy. We want the college community to see us. I know at the beginning of, uh, usually the fall semester, several people will say, "Man, what's going on? I see campus police everywhere." Well, thank you. That's probably the best compliment I can get, uh, for my department, because we want to be visible. We, you know, if the bad guys are seeing us, they might be more deterred, you know, to not commit a crime than if they didn't see us and we just reacted and took the report. So, we try to have high visibility, we try to maintain a good relationship with the college community. Uh, we'll go out and be part of orientations on campus, whether it's athletic orientation, nursing orientation, um, uh, intercultural, uh, students and international students. We try to get out to establish these relationships, to where we break the barriers, to where people are comfortable approaching us, talking to us, or reporting issues that come up. So, um, that's been a big help, because after all, we do need the information about the crime, because if it happened to one person, it could happen to somebody else as well. So, the more we know, the more we can put that information together and try to strategize what's going on, where, how, when, why, and, again, try to minimize, uh, those issues. Um, we also have, uh, emergency, uh, phone boxes on campus. Currently, we have six of them. Uh, there's one up by the fieldhouse, there's, uh, one outside of the campus police department, so that the thinking was, if nobody's in our office, they come to get help or assistance at our office, they can still push a button and still get in contact with us. Then we have one outside of the Jewel Building, uh, we have one down by the library, Allied Health Building here in the center of campus, and then we have one down by the Conference Center by the pond. So, that's five. We had a sixth one, but it's currently out of service. It was down at the south end of the pond, and we're reevaluating whether to replace that with the current or a new kind. We have two more that are on the way with the new athletic, uh, complex that's coming on board. There's going to be one up by the baseball field, track area, that one, and there'll be another one down by the softball field by the new, uh, restroom and concession stand. These two will have, like, a voice box on it. I mean, it's going to be the same, but we'll be able to do emergency notification out of this. So, if we have a tornado warning, we have an active shooter from our office, we'll be able to convey a message up to that area, alerting people as to what's going on. Uh, there'll also be a camera on each of these, so we'll be able to pick up information as well, uh, if anything's going on. So, we'll be adding two more with the completion of this construction project, which should be very helpful to the overall safety and security of the campus. Um, and then also, probably an important part is, um, you know, an evacuation plan. Uh, we've worked with the campus safety committee, with buildings and grounds, as well as our department, and strategized and put, um, evacuation plans strategically through campus. So, if somebody's in a classroom, hey, where do I go? It's a fire drill, it's a, or an actual fire, actual tornado, there's a reference up on the wall in the hallways, or if there's just a visitor on campus, there's something there that can direct them where to go. We also worked with the, uh, fire department on this as well, and we got their input to help us out in regards to what would be the best practice of doing this. Um, you know, there's several, you know, things in this report. Again, it's a mandate, we have to do it. Um, this began in the early 1990s, and it's just evolving even more so today. So, with that, uh, any questions?
Greg, I didn't note the statistical page for the, uh, Leavenworth campus. And did I overlook it somewhere or?
Uh, okay, now that's a separate document. Do you have that document? And I don't know if that was included in your packet.
Could you talk about that a little bit?
Okay, we do have, so, I think the document that you have is for the main campus and TEC campus and the 7535 State Avenue. We have a separate one just for the, and I don't know if that was included in the packet or not.
No. I don't believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll pick it up, I'll make it available.
Okay, great.
For the board members.
We'll get those down.
I only picked up this one, I didn't know it was the second one.
We're, we're hoping the numbers are similar to what we see here, because these are outstanding numbers.
I can answer that for you. I have that document in my hand. Now, there is, when you receive that, there may be, uh... But, let's see, on the Leavenworth campus, uh, total zeros for the last, for the last three years, uh, zeros on everything that we had to report.
Okay, that's great news. Board members, any other questions for Greg?
I have one, Greg. Um, uh, persons that's on the campus that are not students, where is it in here?
That would probably be in the student code of conduct policy?
No, no, they not a student. They just come out here and walk.
Okay.
Where, where do, when something happens to those persons, where is it reported in?
That would be included in our crime stats. It doesn't matter if you're, we're not just reporting crime that happens to students.
Okay.
We have to report, uh, to everybody.
But they were supposed to report it?
Yes.
Like, if, like, if I'm out here walking and my car get broken into?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay, but, that would be an auto burglary. We're not mandated to report that in this document.
Oh.
Now, there's another document that we have. It's due October 15th, and that goes to the Department of Education directly, and that's another, uh, batch of crime statistics that we have to submit. See, we have three documents that we have to do each year. There's one that we report to the state, then we have one that's the UCR report, and then we have the Clary report. And each one had different caveats to it, to where we can't use the same template and send it all three places. So...
Okay, so if I'm out here walking and breaking in my car, I'm not in this?
No. But...
And I'm in what one?
But we do have, on the college website, we do have crime statistics that we post up there, just, it's not mandated, but we put them on there.
There's another entire report we have to do, Miss, that includes all of those type of crimes. This is for the federal major crime issues, uh, and the other report that we do by mid-month and next month is the one that includes those kind of incidents.
Okay.
I, I just had one, one comment. I, I thought I heard you say with the Clary mandate that, uh, a major crime that occurs like across the street or within a certain, I assume there's, that, that may get real interesting with the new campuses on State Avenue.
Yes.
I'm sure you've thought of that. I, all of a sudden, I went, whoa, that...
Right.
That could be really, uh, challenging.
And that's very challenging, because what happens in a contiguous area, just like for now, the main campus, okay? Even before we took over student housing, we would have to include parts of Royal Ridge Apartments over there, because they were contiguous to our campus. Um, you know, one of the things they say, sidewalk, street, sidewalk. So, now that they put sidewalks in on the south side of State Avenue, now we have to try. Now, try's the key. So, we have to coordinate with the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department to try to find out, can they track crimes that occur over there? Because we don't have the capabilities. Well, we go to them each year, and they say, "We can't track that specifically." So, in our report, we have to put in, we attempted to get these, you know, this information, but Kansas City, Kansas Police Department was unable to. We also have to do that for the Leavenworth, uh, Police Department as well. We attempt to get the information, but they can't provide it. You know, it's, it's so specific, but yet that's what the Department of Education is, you know, wanting. Uh, but that's, it's not how we get out of it, it's just, that's how we go about, they can't provide it, so we put that caveat in our report as well to indicate we tried to get it.
Have you been, uh, consulted in regard to, uh, security... Have you been consulted in regard to security needs for Tech One?
Yes. Mr. Bodie and I have had several discussions about that campus as well down there, and we're putting, putting things together for that as well.
And so, those emergency...
The emergency phones.
Phones, are we looking to install?
I don't have an answer for that yet because we're still discussing that issue. So, I don't think anything's been, you know, nailed down yet on that. But as far as card access, cameras, yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg.
All right.
Thank you.
And I know I've been on here too long, but I did give you a report and a couple of the things that are in the report that I would like to highlight. There's a book, there's a job fair today at Reardon Center that we're sharing. Participate again. The bookstore's a little $1.8 million worth of books to start this school year, and so, I guess Kansas City and the state of Kansas is 8% tax. People are happy. And in financial aid, it didn't stand out real big, but again, our financial aid team with the professionalism, with how they run that, the college again got its certification that we are eligible and certified by the federal government to issue Pell and, and student loans. It's one of those things that just kind of flies under the radar. Everybody thinks it just happens. It doesn't just happen. And so, our financial aid team again did it right so that we continue to be eligible to issue financial aid. So, that's the end of my report.
Mr. Bodie?
Yes.
Would you mind mentioning the event that's going to occur this Saturday?
The Bourne Learning Trail event is Saturday morning at nine, the grand opening. Joint effort by a bunch of agencies. I know the United Way was critical in it. It's just to the north of the Performing Arts Center. Across the street, there's a little triangle of sidewalks there. We'll note that we, we refinished them, and then they came in and they painted some educational material on them. There's signs out there. It's a learning trail for children and their parents, and they're going to have an event this Saturday, the grand opening of that, and some vendors here and some fire trucks and something to make it good for the families.
Thank you. I noted the volleyball and soccer teams were off to a pretty good start this year, including the women's soccer, winning their first inaugural game.
Yes.
About that. That's the only one they've won so far, but they continue...
Well, they won that one.
They continue to be competitive. The, the men are 4-1 and 1 and doing really well. Our volleyball team's 15th in the nation right now. I don't know how they did over the weekend, but they're playing extremely well. So, I think they won their match, are they, over the weekend, Alan?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay. But yes, they're doing very well. Golf team won a basketball tournament and then was playing in another one, and I can't tell you exactly how they did, I know.
Good. Okay.
One other question. Do we have a date for the retirement of the athletic director?
December 1st.
December, I believe.
End of this semester.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Brian? Okay, great report. Thank you very much. And now, we'll hear from our other vice president, Dr. Agger Jaffray.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to ask Dr. Brenda Kelly to step up to the microphone. Dr. Kelly is our new Director of Developmental Education. She comes to us with a wealth of experience and a lot of energy. She got her EDS in reading education, her master's in special education, and her PhD in higher education administration. She was the founding director at UMKC Center for Academic Development, where she was a learning specialist at UMKC School of Pharmacy and worked with entering pharmacy students to improve their basic skills. She's been an adjunct reading instructor at KCKCC since August 2010. She has been busy meeting with personnel in various offices to learn about support services. She's also interacted with the research department to request data on developmental education classes, and she scheduled her first meeting with the Dev Ed Advisory Council for next week. So, we are very, very pleased to have her. Dr. Kelly?
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having the vision for this position, for serving our students, serving our community. I really want to embrace and will embrace making life better in our community. And the activities that I'll be engaged in working collaboratively with the administration and our faculty and staff, as well as our students, will make life better in our community. The responsibilities that are before us is not an independent one that I bring. It's one that I will be a part of a collaborative team that has worked over a year in doing research for the development of this position. That was the most enticing part of why I applied for this position. I am a product of this institution. I'm a product of Sumner High School. We'll experience a 45-year, 45th year reunion next week. So, I'm proud to come back, and I really do embrace Trustee Flonder's concern about alumnis because I am one. And I'm proud to be one. I'm proud to be a part of the Windack County community. With that in mind, I want to say just a few things. I won't elaborate too long because I know it's been a bit of time you've been sitting. When I was interviewed, I was asked, "What will you do to enhance the life of our students and our campus, and how will you know that it's an enhancement?" And with that thought in mind, I responded by saying, "We will track them. We will find them. We will find out what they need. We will speak with them." And in tracking, what I mean by that, and that's not a negative connotation. That's saying, once you make a commitment to our institution, we make a commitment to you. And whether your goal is to come and just take a course to advance your position on your job, or if it's your goal to secure a certificate for a program to, again, to advance the quality of life in our community, or if it's your goal to just take a course that you did not pass at a previous institution of higher education, or if it's your goal to actually acquire a, and a degree from our institution, we will be asking that question of our students. Why are you here? What is it you want? Let us help you acquire that. So, my responsibility is to work with and identify the students that are enrolled in developmental education courses, working with the faculty and the administration as to how we can effectively help those students acquire their goals as quickly as possible. And we are in the business of training professionals. And every student that we encounter, we are training a professional, and that professional will go back and serve our community in a professional manner. So, that's the mindset that we will be working from. And as Dr. Agger Jaffray has already alluded to, we in our first month, we have set up our advisory council for the developmental education. And thank you, Dr. Gibbons, for allowing us to do it on the fourth. We do this once a month, on the fourth Wednesday from 2:00 to 4:00. And we have had the support of our advisory committee, which is now our advisory council. That council has agreed to continue to serve. And our first agenda item will be, I will give them a report of what I've been able to accomplish this first month, and then we will also, we will then begin to pull out our strategic plan and see where are we on the plan. Just my, this position is a part of that strategic plan. My existence in this position is a part of that strategic plan being implemented. And then we will go into, I will share with them what I have identified in terms of our student developmental, students enrolled in developmental education courses, how many there are, what is it they're taking, what are their needs beyond academics, beyond our academic support services, but what are their needs in terms of the social aspect? What are our students' needs that relate, as it relates to childcare, housing, transportation, clothing, food, jobs, and money, and how to manage money? All of those are a part of shaping the holistic student that we are, that professional that we're bringing forth. So, thank you for granting me the time to visit with you. We will have more detailed reports to give to you, but I want to applaud our faculty and staff that you have hired here, as well as administrators. All have been very cordial in allowing me to visit with them, to learn from them. This will be a process that we will engage in, that we will embark upon, and I am confident that you will be very proud of the selection you have made, not in myself, but in all those that we will work together for securing a better life here in our community and making it better for all those that live in this community. So, I want to say thank you and for allowing me a job. Do you have any questions?
Dr. Kelly, we'd like to welcome you onboard and we're excited and anxious to, for you and your group to do their work and to report back to, you know, on the results. So, are there other questions or comments for Dr. Kelly?
Now, I just want to commend you on the, instilling the mentality of professional and professionalism because I think that that is something that our area businesses have spoken loud and clear on. It's what they, I guess they call it soft skills. I don't know how soft they are, but they are skills. And so, I think that instilling that idea of professionalism and being professionals will go a long way toward meeting the goal that you have embraced in making life better. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
All right.
Okay, I would like to ask Karen Fife, Director of the Center for Research and Community Development, and Karen is going to just give you a brief presentation on the 2012 Climate Survey.
Good morning.
I know it's been kind of a long morning already, but I appreciate the opportunity to present the results of the 2012 Organizational Climate Survey. What I'm going to be doing, okay, got it, thanks. These are just the highlights of the findings. Dr. Grunkie and I have been working on more of a technical report that's got a lot of more detail in it, and, and that's going to be posted on MyDOT and available to everyone very soon. So, again, this is, this is just kind of the highlights, and the full technical report will be finished and published on MyDOT. First of all, I'd like to talk about the purpose of the survey, and we have done the organizational climate survey for many years now, and it was a part of the 2011, 2012 strategic plan, and now, it's also a part of our new strategic plan to support an organizational culture focused on excellence. Another purpose is to identify the areas of success, areas in which we're doing well in terms of organizational climate, and also identify areas for improvement. So, those are areas that we're not doing quite so well. The 2012 survey will serve as the benchmark to measure improvements as we move through our new strategic plan. Since the last survey administration, we last administered the organizational climate survey in, in 2010. We did not administer a survey in 2011 because there were a lot of initiatives taking place to improve on areas that were identified in the 2010 survey, and we didn't feel as if enough time had passed to do the survey again so that we could see measurable change. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about what organizational improvements were made based on the 2010 results. In the, I believe it was January in service, and I believe it snowed that day, and people still showed up, which was awesome. There were brainstorming sessions held with everyone to talk about which areas to focus on for improvement. And out of those brainstorming session came two areas, communication and cleanliness. And there have been a lot of efforts in these two areas since then to improve. In terms of communication, the Dean's Council newsletter is being distributed now. The Dean's Council has also opened up 10 minutes of their meetings every time for sort of like an open forum. There's also been more effective use of MyDOT. There's communication when articulation agreements are signed through email. So, every time an articulation agreement is signed, an email go out. There's also the staff award recognition, which we saw earlier today. And there are, the staff senate is also doing a lot of social activities in terms of coffees and, and things like that. So, these are the efforts that have taken place regarding communication. Another area that was focused on was cleanliness of the campus, and I must say that Brian Bodie and his team should be commended for this. I'm not going to go through everything that's happened, but the custodial staff has implemented a lot of changes in their area to focus on cleanliness. And we did notice, and we'll talk about this a little later, is that there was not one comment on the 2012 organizational climate survey about cleanliness or lack of cleanliness. So, kudos to Brian and his team for that. Okay. Talk a little bit about the methodology. We administered the survey in April 2012. We try to always administer it at the same time each year. We use the Kansas City, Kansas Community College email. We sent out an email invite, went, had a link to a survey on Zoomerang, and Zoomerang is similar to Survey Monkey, but it's the online survey software that we use in the CRCD. So, employees could go in, click on the link. They were assured anonymity. Their responses would remain confidential and would be reported as aggregated data only. Now, in previous survey administrations, I can tell you that as soon as that survey invite went out, I would get about 10 or 12 phone calls from people going, "Are you sure this is confidential? Are you sure this is anonymous?" And I assured them that it was. Since we've switched to Zoomerang, I didn't get any phone calls. So, I think people are now more assured than they have been in, in past years that, that their results do remain confidential. And then, employees were given three weeks to complete the survey. We also did some survey revisions based on comments from the 2010 survey. Some of the comments on the 2010 survey, some of the questions were unclear. They were ambiguous. They weren't, respondents weren't really sure how to answer them. So, Dr. Grunkie and myself started looking at how we could revise the survey to make it more reliable and clear to the respondents. And after we made those revisions, we convened a six-member employee panel to provide feedback on the survey revisions, and their feedback concluding, included rephrasing some of the survey questions and if they felt as if the new response categories that we were adding or changing were appropriate. So, we were really fortunate to have sort of a pilot group to, to kind of test out the survey before we made the changes. We did, Dr. Grunkie and I felt that we did need to make some changes to the Likert scale to make it a better instrument. So, you can see that in 2010, the Likert scale went from definitely no to definitely yes. We've actually changed the Likert scale to go from not at all to very much so, and we've also made a Likert scale more appropriate for those questions that talk about how often something occurs. So, there were changes to, to the Likert scale, and whenever you make changes to a Likert scale, you have to be careful about your comparisons to previous survey administrations because of the changes in the Likert scale. So, I just want to kind of put that caution out there that any comparisons made to previous surveys need to be made with a little bit of caution because we've changed the Likert scale, but we do feel as if we have a much better instrument now. We also, based on comments, in previous surveys, we had respondents respond to questions based on their department and/or division, and that kind of confused a lot of people because they weren't sure kind of if which, if they were supposed to be responding in terms of their division or the department. So, we changed that term on the survey to unit, and we added a clarification statement that said, "Unit may refer to your department or division depending on your employment circumstance. For faculty and administrative assistance, your unit is generally your division." For faculty and administrative assistants, your unit is generally your division. For most staff, your unit is generally your department." So we feel like we clarified this much better in the new survey as well. So now we're moving on to response rates. And as you can see, for the 2012 survey, there were 271 employees who completed the survey. Response rates were lower in 2012 compared to 2010, especially among adjuncts and part-time staff. The overall response rate for 2012 was 28% compared to 35% in 2010. Adjuncts went from 24% to 13%, and part-time staff went from 12% to 6%. So this is one of the things we're going to be working on, is how can we improve response rates? We would like higher response rates among our employees. In terms of response rates by location and length of employment, most respondents primarily work at main campus, 10% are at Tech and 6% are at the Longview Center, or Leavenworth Center, sorry. Length of employment categories are fairly evenly distributed, with the exception of the less than one-year category, which is 5%. But these actually mirror our actual work locations and length of employment categories. So we feel like we have a, even though the response rate was lower, we feel like we have a pretty good representation of our employees. Moving on to some of the results. In order to identify the areas of success, we looked at the top five survey items that had the five highest mean scores, and we're calling those our top five, our areas of success. The bottom five are areas for improvement, the survey questions with the five lowest mean scores. And comparisons were made between employee category, work location, and length of employment for the top five and bottom five. And we conducted a one-way analysis of variance, or ANOVA, to determine on which survey questions statistically significant differences were observed. And then to go beyond that, we did what's called a Tukey post hoc test, which identifies the areas for each of those items within the groups where there's differences. So I think that's one of the things I like about being a cool nerd, is you get to use words like Tukey and Bonferroni and those kinds of things, because all the statistical tests are named after the people who created them. So we have a little bit of fun in our department talking about Tukey. Do we use a Bonferroni or a Tukey? So anyway.
Question.
I will say, to kind of continue the cool nerd speak here a little bit, is that...
Real quick question. How many items were there on the survey?
I believe there are 45. Yeah, there's about 45. So it's a fairly lengthy survey.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah. To continue sort of the cool nerd speak, sample size does matter regarding statistical significance. And we did have two employee categories that had low sample size, administrators and part-time staff. And because of these low sample sizes, it takes larger differences between the means to reach a statistically significant level. So when you have smaller sample sizes, you need greater differences in the means. So there will be some, some times on here where, in the data that I'm going to show you, that you'll say, "Well, that looks like it should be statistically significantly different. However, because of the small sample size, it didn't reach the level." So I have an example of that, so maybe you can, but that'll be a little more clear. Okay. Top five areas of success. Are we ready? Okay. Drum roll, woo-hoo. Okay. So the survey question that had the highest mean is, "Are you confident that people in your unit know how to do their job well?" And overall, the mean was 4.2. I won't go through each of these, read them out loud, but three of the top five questions are about supervisors. So all in all, you know, our employees seem to have really high regard for their supervisors. That's one point out of here. And three of these were also in the top five in 2010, so that shows some consistency with regard to how we're doing. And that's regarding supervisors listening to our concerns, campus security has been in the top 10 consistently, and supervisors setting examples by working hard themselves. We did observe statistically significant differences between adjuncts and full-time staff regarding satisfaction with the media supervisor, and that is highlighted in red on your table. And here's an area where, if you will see, the part-time staff mean is 3.5 and the part-time, or the administrators' mean is 3.6. And when you look at those figures, that's where you would say, "Well, those are lower. Why isn't there statistically significant difference there?" And it's because of that low sample size, because it takes larger differences in order for it to reach the level of significance. So as far as the top five areas of success by employee categories, we do see significant differences between adjuncts and full-time staff, with adjuncts being a little more satisfied. When we look at the top five by work location, there were no statistically significant differences observed between work locations, even though not statistically significantly different. Tech does have higher means on three of the top five. When we look at it by length of employment, again, no statistically significant differences were observed between length of employment categories. However, most means regardless of the length of employment categories are at or above 4.0, which indicates levels above quite a bit. So now we're going to look at the bottom five, and these are areas for improvement. And here are the bottom five, and again, these are the five questions that had the lowest means. The survey question, "Would you say the college is operating better now than two years ago", had actually the lowest mean on the survey, which is 2.6. And this is a little concerning to us because this is also one of our key indicators, and we'll talk about the key indicators in a few minutes. The next, there's, the next one is, "As an employee, how often do you take advantages of opportunities provided for staff and faculty development?" And that mean is a 3.0. I will say here that prior to the results coming out, Ben Hayes, the Director of Faculty and Staff Development, has contacted the CRCD, and he is in the process of doing a needs assessment with staff, with supervisors, and with faculty to determine how his office can better meet their needs for faculty and staff development. So this is one of the bottom five questions where we're already working, working on. So I think that's really good news there. And most of the bottom five are also supported by the comments that employees made, and I'll get into the comments in a few minutes. Also, there's statistically significant differences here on three questions between employees' categories. Whether the college is operating better now, full-time staff is lower than faculty, both adjunct and full-time faculty. Working as a team when necessary, full-time staff are again lower than faculty, both adjunct and full-time. And then, is the equipment you use to do your work efficient and well-maintained? You will see here that administrators have the highest mean on this, which is 4.7. And I know what you're saying, "Wait a minute, a few minutes ago she just cautioned us about administrators because of the low sample size." The reason why there's significance here is because that mean is so much higher. It did reach the level of significance, so...
Yes, and Baz. Now, we've brought this to your attention a few times in board meetings, comments that are made to board members by staff and faculty about equipment. And we've constantly been given reassurance. But now the survey comes out where it seems that administrators are quite happy that you be among them, right? And then, but everybody else, we're not even close to approaching a four in the, in the survey. So I'm, I'm confused by the reassurances and what has come out in the survey, and I think this was also true in 2010, wasn't it? So we have gone a few years with there being concern about equipment being used in the classes and in the offices of our employees. Do you have, have a plan or a way of addressing this? Baz should be the one to...
My response to that, Mr. Reyes, is that it is always work on progress to improve the condition of equipment. And I don't say that all the equipment on campus are antiquated. We are working on improving that. And it is also fair to bring to the attention of the board that over the past three years, I believe, there was $250,000 for automatic hardware replacement policy that we have established here on campus that were not in place. So we haven't really been buying a lot of equipment in terms of end-user equipment. All the purchases have been on the server side, and it has always been repairs. So if you are a user that have been using a piece of equipment for the past three, four years, and wanting or asking for a replacement for that, and we always come and fix it for you, perhaps that may impact the satisfaction level that you are seeing with campus equipment. But they are all in working orders. If they break beyond repair, we replace them. And I don't think that there is any faculty or staff, whether they are full-time or part-time, that they are left with equipment that is, that are not working. As a matter of fact, with our health desk extension, we have been providing them with extra service that was never available to them in the past. We have moved in the direction of mobile devices. People now have connectivity levels that was not available in the past, and it is hard to accomplish this without adequate working equipment. So we will do more work on improving the levels of equipment, but it does require money.
Baz, is it including those copier, the old copier machines?
I'll defer to Brian for that. The copier machines, and that, the copier machine are actually, I think they are included in this when you're asking about equipment on campus, but equipment...
It's included in the comment.
The copiers are not really the responsibility of information services to support. This is from outside, and Brian can jump in here if I'm not addressing it properly. It is always the responsibility of the purchasing agent to ask third-party providers, such as Xerox and others, to come in and do maintenance for these copiers on campus. But truth to be said, some of them aren't equated. They came here, they came here in 1980s and we're still using them. So that may impact the way people perceive equipment. So it is not necessarily desktop computers, it is not necessarily mobile devices that we have on campus, and we are working on improving that.
Okay.
It includes copiers, telephones, air conditioners, everything else that's on the campus, because it just says equipment.
Yeah, I would second that. Equipment here is, is in the broadest definition, so it's not just the computers. And I've got some examples of comments, because this also came up as a theme within, in the comments. Okay. Here's the bottom five by work location, and again, we did not see any statistically significant differences between the work locations. Most of the means are at or about, or at or above 3.0, indicating levels at or above Here it is by length of employment. Statistically significant differences regarding equal contribution in the work unit were observed. And respondents who have been at KCKCC 10 or more years think their supervisor sees to it that everyone is contributing equally to a lesser extent than respondents who have been at KCKCC less than 10 years. And this is kind of a trend that we've seen in previous administrations, is that the longer people have been here, the, sort of the less satisfied and the less enthusiastic they are. Okay. Onto the...
Is that counterintuitive to their longevity?
Like, excuse me?
Is that not counterintuitive to their longevity?
Yeah.
If they're staying, if they're not happy, they could go.
They could. And we, we do have a question on the survey, but we didn't include it here on the highlights of findings, but it will be in the technical report, is, in the past year, I think it is, have you ever seriously considered leaving KCKCC? And there are very few people who say yes. Some people say, "Yes, but I'm nearing retirement," or something like that, so... Okay. Moving on to the key indicators. In previous survey administrations, we've only considered two questions as key indicators, and those are the top two questions here. "Would you say the college is operating better now than two years ago?" And considering everything, how, are, considering everything, are you satisfied with KCKCC at the present time? So those were our two indicators in the past. In the CRCD, we thought we needed to add another indicator, which is considering everything, how satisfied are you with your job? Because we thought that was a pretty big deal question, too, job satisfaction, right? So here are the key indicators. We did hear, go ahead and compare to 2010, but I just want to do the cautionary statement again, that due to changes in the Likert scales, these have to be kind of interpreted with caution. And you can see here that overall means on the key indicators showed little or no change between 2010 and 2012. So there's some consistency there. And because we should have a better comparison the next time we do the survey administration because we will have used the same Likert scales for two years. Okay. Here are the key indicators by employee categories. And as you can see here, statistically significant differences were observed on all three key indicators between employee categories. And again, you are seeing that full-time staff are statistically significantly lower than faculty and adjuncts on all three of the key indicators. And what, what I'm kind of gleaning from the survey results in general are that full-time staff are tend, for this survey administration, are tending to be less satisfied with the organizational climate than faculty, or full-time faculty and adjuncts. So there are several places where full-time staff are lower. Here it is by work location. Again, we're not finding statistically significant differences by work location, with the exception of whether the college is operating better now, the means are higher than 3.0, indicating levels above somewhat. And again, with length of employment, again, we have this 10 or more year phenomenon going on, and statistically significant differences regarding satisfaction with KCKCC. Respondents who have been at KCKCC 10 or more years are less satisfied than respondents who have been at KCKCC less than 10 years. So again, here's another question where we're seeing that 10-years and over phenomenon going on. When we looked at, we also looked at the, the key indicators because of this sort of phenomenon going on with full-time staff. So a question was raised in the Dean's Council when we presented last week, is, is it that full-time faculty are going up, their means are getting higher, and full-time staff are going down? What's going on there? So we did a comparison with the 2010 means to the 2012 means on the key indicators between the faculty/employee categories and full-time staff. And what we're seeing here, and those are highlighted in red, is that full-time faculty means have increased only if slightly on all three indicators, while full-time staff means have decreased on all three indicators. So there is, the possible reason why we're seeing the differences with full-time, between full-time staff and the faculty categories, is that there, we are seeing slight improvements among faculty and slight decreases among full-time staff. And here are employee comments. Want to just talk briefly about the methodology that Dr. Grunkie and I use to analyze the comments. We are sort of old-school, and we like to read each comment individually instead of using a qualitative software pack... using a qualitative software package, because we feel like we get a better context for the, the comments. When you run it through a software package, sometimes you, you lose some of that context. So we use qualitative content analysis to determine consistent themes. Each comment is read and then coded with a theme or themes. Some comments do have more than one theme in them, if they're talking about more than one thing. The number of times a theme is mentioned is counted, and then the number of themes with the highest frequency are then identified as overall themes. And again, I just want to mention that cleanliness was not mentioned and not identified as a theme, so we were really happy about that. And we do, communication is, is a theme again this year, but I do want to mention that in previous survey administrations, the issue regarding communication seemed to be more top-down communication. There were fewer mentions of the, of issues with top-down communication in the 2012 survey. With communication, it seems to be more lateral communication. So I think the efforts that the Dean Council, the Dean's Council has made regarding their newsletter, the open forums, the, what the staff awards, all of the things that we've done regarding communication have lessened the issue with the top-down communication. So one of the themes were general positive comments. And overall, there were 58 respondents that had something positive to say about KCKCC, and that's about 30% of overall respondents. And the, the positive comments were just general in nature. We, we looked at all the positive comments to see if there was a theme within those positive comments, but we couldn't come up with a common theme. So they're just general statements. "I love my job, I love this place, KCKCC is a great place to work, our dean is wonderful, I really like, you know, the benefits, having Thanksgiving and Christmas off," those kinds of general comments. So I did want to mention that we did have 58 general positive comments, because I think the tendency sometimes is when you give someone anonymity, and you give them the opportunity to provide comments, sometimes they tend to be more negative than, than positive. At least, that's what I found in, in my experience. So the first theme is communication, and these are just some examples of some of the comments regarding communication. And again, I do want to mention that there was fewer mentions of top-down. Communication comments were more lateral in nature, meaning within or between department issues regarding the communication. And in the technical report, we will list every single comment that was made, but these are just some of the excerpts. One of my favorites is, sharing information is one thing, getting people to listen is another. You know, that shows some element of communication there. Another theme with the comments is unfairness and favoritism. And again, this seems to be happening within departments and between departments. There's, policies are not being enforced equally. You know, there's some, some things about equal pay for equal work, those, those kinds of comments. So there's, this was another theme that, that emerged out of the comments. Lack of teamwork. Again, this is primarily within and between departments. There's some issues of territoriality sometimes, and, you know, there's, there's just seems to be this feeling that, that some, some people feel like there's, there's, not, not everybody is working together to accomplish the, the goals. And again, as we've mentioned before, equipment, technical support and workspace. Again, this is the broadest definition of equipment. Some of the, talking about color printers. You know, some of them are talking about supplies that they need for their classrooms. Office space here, again, is, is mentioned. Someone says that if they need to turn around in their office, they have to go to the hallway to do it. You know, so.
Ooh, it's small.
Yeah. I can't imagine an office that small, but, okay. So those are the general themes that emerged out of the comments. So in summary, the response rates were lower in 2012, so we need to identify ways to increase participation in the organizational climate survey. We are seeing some consistent areas of success, which are supervisors listening to concerns, campus police is always high up on satisfaction, and supervisors setting examples by working hard. Areas for improvement, again, the college operating better now than two years ago, that is one of our key indicators, and it was in the bottom five. Employees working as a team, that came across also in the bottom five and also came out in the comments. And equipment is also an area for improvement. One of the things that might be of concern is regarding the key indicators, is, is the three questions. None of, none of those three questions were in the top five. And while that might not be, seem to be a big deal, it would seem to say that, you know, if we're using those as key indicators, they should be higher up than, than they are in terms of the mean rankings. And kind of the big takeaway, I guess, out of this is full-time staff are often less satisfied than other employee groups. So these are the takeaways that the research department gleaned from the organizational climate survey. Our plans are to take the show on the road, so to speak, and present to the college senate, the staff senate, the faculty senate. And hopefully, with those constituencies, then we'll come up with some plans to address some of these issues. So. Any questions?
Are there any plans to address this with a strategic plan? Many Dr. Givens, it would seem that those other entities can maybe take care of symptoms, but in fact, it is the strategic plan that drives our, our business, drives the budget, as you pointed out. And so, shouldn't there be-
Yes, absolutely. They will be invited to the strategic planning committee to, to discuss the issues.
The CRCD is more than happy to present wherever we're invited. We like to disseminate information.
I think it's a good report. I think it's very thorough. I'm happy we do it. I think it does show some real positives. I'm really pleased to see that two years ago, communication was the, was the issue, that everybody was talking about how communication wasn't taking place, and obviously, there's been significant. Doesn't mean there's always need for improvement. There's always need, but it does show there's been some significant improvement made in communications. And also, the cleanliness, I think, is important also.
Right.
One of the areas of communication that still bothers me is this lack of communication between departments and divisions. We heard that from students in the listing project we did, we heard it from other faculty members, that people just don't seem to know what everybody else is doing, and there's this lack of communication between departments, and so there are these huge silos out there. And students felt like they were getting run around sometime, and they would go to one department, get a different answer in another department. I just think that's an area of communication we're really going to need to continue to focus on.
Right. And what this shows is, it's not only the students that are feeling that way, it's employees as well.
Good point.
Yeah, it's employees.
Any other questions, comments for Karen? Great report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay. I'd be happy to answer any questions on my report, and if there aren't any, I will respectfully request your approval for my report.
Well, I'd just like to note, on tomorrow's report in News and Updates, that fourth bullet, once again, we see employee estate data qualifying and quantifying, you know, the success of our, of our students. So congratulations to, you know, faculty and staff here. We're obviously sending them good material. Great.
All right, I'm going to show my ignorance here. Can you talk a little bit about blended classrooms?
Oh, blended, you know, you ask me that almost every year.
I know.
And I tell you, it's the same thing. It's the hybrid. It's classes that are taught online, but they have mandatory meetings a couple of times in the semester.
And also, you mentioned articulation agreements. Do we have others besides the, you have one with the KU nursing department, are there new articulation agreements?
Yes. And actually, we have them posted on the website.
Okay.
Yeah. If you go to the college website and go to academic programs, and then scroll down to degrees and programs, click on that. We have articulation agreements, and we have recently divided them up into general MOUs. And then there is an area for discipline-specific articulation agreements. We've got lots up there.
So we continue to add to that.
Oh, yes, yes.
Would you mention the big one that we just had?
The nursing one?
Yes.
Yeah. That, we just had a signing, in fact, I think I reported on it, the signing ceremony at KU for the nursing. And it'll be for the associate's degree to transition into the bachelor's. And it was a really nice ceremony. All the, most of the community colleges were there, they were represented, and it was a good, nice occasion.
Great. I see you're having Thursday informal reception for the new faculty.
Right.
What time and location are you doing?
That is going to be on Thursday, and it's from 2 till 4, and it's going to be in the private dining room. And this is something new that we're starting this year, that, and we're also doing a series of intense orientation sessions for new faculty. But this kind of informal reception is like the kickoff, just to make them feel welcome. And Dr. Givens and Dean's Council have been invited to that, and you're welcome to join us.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions, comments for Tamara?
Did appreciate noting the workshops for faculty and staff development, not only the attention to the new staff, but as we were talking earlier, there were a number of technology trainings and that, that would be taking place, and instructional strategies. So it was great to see that, and follow up with how well-attended those are, so that we might be able to gauge the interest and need for additional support, maybe, for these kind of things.
And we do have a professional development incentive program that we approved last year, that the board approved last year, where faculty who participate can accumulate points. And at the end of the year, we basically give them a small stipend for their participation.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion to accept. The vice president.
Clyde jumped in there. Would you second it?
I second.
Okay, all right, there we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you both, both of the vice presidents. Comprehensive reports, very, very good. Okay, finance.
Alibi from my report earlier, and probably what I should have had on here first. I'd like to introduce Dr. Baz Abaline, Doctor of Management and Organizational Leadership with an emphasis in information technology. Baz's dissertation was Chief Information Officer's Transformational Leadership Behaviors in Community College: A Comparison-Based Approach to Improving Job Satisfaction of Information Technology Workers. And we're really pleased and happy to, to have the new doctor on board.
Congratulations, Dr. Baz. Congratulations. All right.
I ask your approval for payment of the bill.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, it's been motion and second, and all in favor?
I have a question.
Oh, we have, hold it. We have a question.
Oh, no. The 18,000 for the eight pole support for the baseball field, and that, was this included in the beginning?
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
No, we're not there yet. Yeah, I don't think, we're paying the bills.
We're paying the bills.
All right.
Once again, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now the financial report.
Ask your approval of the financial report.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion and second. JD, I know you have a comment.
Well, we have reviewed, the only thing that I would bring your attention to is under facilities support percentage. Brian can give you further detail, but basically, it's a timing issue. And we feel that we're, we're right in line where we should be with that. We do sometimes use this fund to pay some of our contractors, as was explained, but then we get that reimbursed back into our general fund. So as I say, it's really more of a timing thing. And then on our electrical use, again, please note, as you know, we have had a severe summer, but we continue to register our kilowatt hours lower than the previous five years. The costs, however, remain all-time highs. But I think even given the severity of this weather that we've had, and, and knowing that we are still using less energy than we did previously, is certainly a, a good thing, positive for the campus.
Okay.
Okay, I still need to ask the question about five and six.
We're not there yet.
He said on five.
No, we're on, the financial report. Hold on, Mary Ann, we're getting it.
Yeah, because I still want to answer. Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now.
Now I ask for your approval of recommendations C. 1 through 7.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Mary Ann has a question.
Okay. The lights for that, and the poles was not included in the original?
Not for the baseball field, no ma'am.
Okay, why wasn't included in the beginning?
Because it cost too much money to make it through the budget process, as we were trying to get those projects done. But what this is, is just the conduit wire and the concrete support that will support those in the, in the future with the, the steel base that comes up through that concrete, if in fact, we ever want to light the baseball field. We won't have to tear up the carpet, nor will we have to tear up the outfield and everything to put them in in the future. So this is a-
It's a forward-thinking.
It's the infrastructure portion. Yeah, it's just the infrastructure portion, so that when we can afford the poles and lights, we can put them up.
Yeah.
We're going to spend 18,000 until 40 later on.
That's right.
Oh, we do a 36,000 to do it later on.
It's about, it's about $400,000 to light a baseball field.
But doing this now while the ground's torn up is much more cost-efficient at 18,000 than it would be to come back behind and do it later, is the point.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Call for a question.
All right. Question's been called. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Report from committees.
I just have, oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask the media department to present our premiere, the United Way 2012 campaign video. I would like to thank the media department for their work, primarily Mr. Kimrow, Eva Simmons, and Randy, I can't remember Randy's last name, but, okay. But I appreciate your work, and we'd like to premiere the United Way video at this, campaign video at this time.
My name is Ed Asner, and I was raised in Wyandotte County and graduated from Wyandotte High School. While my career in show business is taking me a long way from Minnesota Avenue, I have never forgotten that KCK was my home. That's why I'm proud to be the honorary chairperson of the 2012 Wyandotte County United Way campaign. 158,000 people call Wyandotte County Kansas Home. They live in KCK neighborhoods like Argentine, Rosedale, Piper, Turner, and in cities like Edwardsville and Bonnet Springs. Approximately 21% of individuals and 24% of families in Wyandotte County live below the federal poverty level. Since 1921, Wyandotte County United Way has been meeting the needs of the people of this county through specific programs at more than 30 local agencies, where they meet people's basic needs, nurture children and families, and improve the health and quality of life for the people of Wyandotte County every day. County every day. Dedicated community volunteers take on the crucial tasks of selecting programs and allocating funds to them. Through these focused programs, Wyandotte County United Way is making a positive impact on the lives of those in need, the future of children and youth, and the health of residents throughout the community.
Every year, between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five families need your help after a fire. They lose everything they own at no fault of their own through natural disasters, just in Wyandotte County.
Last year, over thirty-three thousand basic needs were met in Wyandotte County by eight local agencies. Over five thousand of those needs were met at Bethel Neighborhood Center, where elderly clients receive emergency assistance, home repairs, cleaning services, and support through referrals and advocacy. Mental Health of the Heartland met almost fifteen thousand needs, providing supportive listening, coping strategies, and information to individuals. Emergency food assistance was provided to over fourteen thousand individuals at Catholic Charities of Northeast Kansas.
Well, when the, when the Red Cross helps disaster victims, it doesn't start with us. It starts with you. It starts with you filling out your United Way pledge card, you giving up your hard-earned money, so that United Way can help the Red Cross, and in turn, we can help victims of house fires. If you'll do me a favor, if you'll close your eyes for a second, and imagine this, your house is burnt, has burnt down, you're standing in your front yard, you've got wet socks, your kids are at your feet crying, your ears are ringing from the sirens and the smoke alarms, your ears, I mean, they're just ringing, you, you can't hear anything. Your nose, your lungs, they're burning from all the smoke, and you have no idea what to do. Because you filled out your pledge card to the United Way, and they helped fund the disaster needs of that family, the Red Cross volunteer will be there in, in less than an hour to help them with clothing, food, medication, eyeglasses, a place to sleep, whatever they need. But it doesn't start with us, it starts with you.
It is worth bringing children to El Centro, because they get an education, and he learns a lot how to be respectful.
Our children are the future of Wyandotte County. Sixteen local United Way agencies met over seventy-five thousand youth and family needs last year. Boys and Girls Club provides Wyandotte County kids with opportunities. Field trips focusing on art, college, and career exploration, or Money Matters, a summer math and science program, and sports leagues are some of the ways they met forty-five hundred youth needs. Urban youth often miss out on the exploration and development of scouting programs, but Boy Scouts of America, Heart of America Council, has given that opportunity to two thousand five hundred and eighty-five boys in Wyandotte County. For children who fall victim to abuse and neglect, Casa of Johnson in Wyandotte Counties and Sunflower House provided support, advocacy, and services, meeting over eight thousand needs in 2011.
My name is Joanna Hernandez. I am John Hernandez's mom. Everything started when we came back from Denver with John's dad. We celebrated his first birthday. His dad returned to Denver, and two weeks later, John's dad dies, and everything falls apart. And we started seeing John's behavior being very hyper, with his brother, and aggressive towards him. And that's when I went to Wyandotte Center to ask for help. Six months later, they diagnosed John with ADHD and aggression. When he was two, I couldn't find improvement, and he was assigned to a case manager. With time, when he was three, he continued with his hyperness, and the psychologist recommended that I take him to El Centro before giving medication to him. After coming to El Centro, he has changed a lot, his way, and he has been less hyper.
I get perfect care. From any phase, no matter what the problem is, they have someone that they will send you to, and I think that's wonderful.
Wyandotte County has been ranked last in the state for the overall health of its citizens, but United Way's agencies are taking aim at that statistic and improving the wellness of Wyandotte Countyans. KCK, huggers of Special Olympics, provides opportunities for yoga, basketball, bowling, softball, and track and field, meeting almost four hundred needs. For individuals and families battling cancer, Cancer Action provides medical equipment and supplies, nutritional supplements, prescription assistance, transportation assistance, and wigs, huh, turbans, scarves. Cancer Action met well over twenty-five thousand needs last year.
Hi, my name is Jean Webb. Duchenne has been a lifesaving place. When you have no one to turn to, they give you the answers, they give you the access to the doctors that you need for whatever is bothering you, whatever's wrong with you, on, on all levels. They have no boundaries. At least, they never displayed any to me. Whatever I needed, they found a way. The facility is, everybody in this facility is here for you, to do whatever it is. They're here to listen, they counsel, they give you hope, they joke with you, they may make you cry, then they'll make you laugh. I don't think people would have too many places to go, not many accesses to a lot of the things that are facilitated here, that, that are given. And it's wonderful, absolutely wonderful. Life-changing for me.
There's much work being done by these organizations and all who make up Wyandotte County United Way to help those in need and provide a better future for this community. This work cannot be done by agency staff alone. You can give, advocate, volunteer, live united. Volunteer by giving up your time, heart, and expertise at a local agency. Advocate by being a voice for those in need, writing a letter, or sharing a tweet or Facebook post. Give by pledging to support Wyandotte County United Way and its agencies this year. Never given before, ah, consider a gift of twelve dollars per month, and enjoy perks and discounts from local merchants at a caring club, as a caring club member. Fair share donors support the community by giving back one percent of their income to Wyandotte County United Way. Leaders who make the commitment to give twelve hundred dollars or more are recognized as leadership givers. No matter the size, every gift, every pledge, every letter, every post, every mentor, every volunteer makes a difference. This is how in Wyandotte County, we live united.
Michael Kimbrough, and of course, Ed Ashner for, for his service to the community. Thank you.
All right, very, very good. Okay, Mary Ann or Kathy?
Well, since you're the new chair, you want to give a report?
Go ahead.
Forgotten left man at home. Donna and I attended the Kansas trustees meeting. The tennis was very good. I think you had eighteen out of the nineteen community colleges were present. He is our new chair for the state, which is, I'm glad to, this is the second time KCK Community College has had somebody as the chairman for the state committee. He'll do all right with my help. A couple of things, they, they're gonna vote by cards, which is something new that they started, so that everybody, each college has an equal chance to say whatever they got to say. I see he switched me so we could have two votes, 'cause he's on the executive committee, and I'll be the delegate, so that way, we could have two votes for the, of the colleges. The biggest thing that they spoke about was in the marketing department, to put a sign in Wichita on the billboards. They wanted to do that, and used some more of the monies that we had collected from each college to put up the billboards eventually, which says economy, what does it say, fueling the economy. So their plan is to have one in Wichita, and still continue to contact the legislators. They also suggested, which is something we had did before when I was a chair, was to meet with your legislators in the off-season, so we need to probably set that meeting up sometime in November real quickly, so that we can meet with them and tell them what KCK is needing, and also what the state of Kansas altogether is doing. So I think those are two main issues, plus him being elected chairman.
Revised the, the logo just a little bit, you recall the, this one, the orange, you know, fuel the economy, and then the Kansas, Kansas Community Colleges was down below, and a lot of feedback came back, said, well, we can't see the Kansas Community Colleges part. So what they did is revise it, put Kansas Community Colleges at the top in larger font, and then instead of fuel the economy, Kansas Community Colleges mean business. And of course, that is a direct attempt to support the, the current governor's roadmap. Community Colleges are in the current governor's roadmap for success for the state, and particularly with growing business, particularly small business. So that change has been made, has been effected, and then we have continued to work through our legislative agenda with Kbor and our legislators, very specifically, very pointed and directedly. So it was a good meeting, and like Mary Ann said, eighteen of the nineteen colleges were present, and everyone was, seemed to be fully engaged, so.
We, we also spoke about the Senate Bill 155, which was part of the program that we had out to Johnson County Community College last month after our meeting. Was there any changes?
No.
Okay, there's no changes in that, in that Senate Bill. So as it is, it's just like it was when it was presented, that day we was out to Johnson County Community College.
Okay, Kathy, do you have a report?
Well, just real briefly, I wanted to, once again, acknowledge Dr. Givens and the Strategic Planning Committee for their concise, excellent presentation to the Advancement Council. There were a lot of good questions, I won't go into a lot of that, they were answered very well. One of the things that, that struck me and, and the chairs, that was part of the strategic plan presentation, was looking at a sequel to the Listening Project, to kind of look at what, what we had accomplished in some of those, particularly those nineteen areas that were identified, and it'd also be an excellent way to, to look at expanding that Advancement Council. And I know that the chairs, you know, we, we've talked a lot about the need to do that, so. One of the questions I thought was really interesting was about internships, and, and one of our, our business partners was talking about that, and, you know, highlighting once again the difficulty in, in not just securing the internships, but the fact that our demographics at this college mean that so many of the students are working, they have families, it's very difficult for them to participate with some of the internships. But they're also looking at an instrument, a common instrument to measure the quality and experience of the internships, so. And the next meeting, on that first, first Monday of next month, Patrick will be making a presentation about the endowment, and particularly about the Educational Hall of Fame.
Good. Any other committee reports? All right, let's move to miscellaneous business, and we'll need a motion. How long do we need?
Ten minutes.
For both items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Move executive session for ten minutes to discuss the two items under miscellaneous business.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Five-minute relocation.
Can you make a motion to come back into session?
Yep, we are back into regular session here.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of agreement between, how's that word, did they, was it the NEA and KCK, CC?
Move approval of the master contract.
Move approval of faculty master contract.
And we have a second by Wendell. Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe finally, we've come to the adjournment portion of the agenda.
So move.
Somebody want to move?
So move.
Everybody moved, and everybody seconded Peggy, good luck sorting that one out. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.